Hey, welcome everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. Today is Monday, October 7th. This is our weekly commissioner meeting. At this time, please call me and you'll order everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Make a motion that we approve the agenda for October 7th. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're going to get right into it today. We have a lot of action items. The first one is the meeting minutes of September 16th and September 30th.
Did have one correction for Doug. Sammy, you made that correction?
Commissioner Mopkin, thank you for bringing that up.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 16th and September 30th.
I got it. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is an action item. This is the ICrimp renewal agreement. I'm going to hand this one over to Doug because I think he's probably...
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I did provide that to you. There's nowhere for the commissioners to sign, but I wanted to make sure that the commissioners had an opportunity to review it. Legal also has had the opportunity to review it. It did go through the formal process and they did approve it. As the commissioners were made aware, there was a significant increase to the cost of our liability insurance now. I've also made arrangements with ICrimp to pay that in payments and installments because we do not have the full amount of $324,000 right now to pay. So we next claim period, we will be making a payment of $75,000. After that payment, we will be making another payment in January after our first tax turnover. We'll be paying our first half by then. And then the remaining $160,000 will be paid off by July is what our arrangements with ICrimp is right now.
Doug, I went through all the red line items and I was concerned. I mean, we've had a substantial reduction in the insurance itself in some of these areas. So I was curious, is that just for Valley County that we were negotiating to get our premium down? Or is this ICrimp is just changing all of the deductibles for everyone?
I understand they're changing the deductibles for all counties that are insured by ICrimp.
So when we look at this, do we have the new buildings on it? I mean, so?
Yes.
So, okay, so everything's on it?
Yes.
Last, a little bit difficult to read some of their crossouts, but... They just changed the policy a lot. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all on board with what they were changing into. This is really our only opportunity, isn't it? You can't go out and shop with anybody else?
No, I mean, not at this point in time. I would not recommend that, but if commissioners were inclined to do that, I would encourage the commissioners to start doing that now.
Do you know on this, and I can't find it, as far as our technology security and all that stuff, did that change drastically?
I, Mr. Chairman...
They still cover if we have a claim or we get hacked and we are going to pay?
They will, but I do believe that that has been modified to some extent.
They took terrorism off. So, I mean, technically, a lot of the cybersecurity stuff is terrorist activity. And so I don't know if that's covered or not covered or... I mean, they went down to 50,000 on the earthquake. That's not that much of a ship, but the debris removal from 2.5 to 1 million?
Here it is. Cyber extortion is 50,000 per covered claim. Yeah, I think they're, I think they're just making changes trying to keep it as affordable as they can. Yeah, this is a county-funded insurance, all of us.
Yep.
So Doug, our action this morning, because later on, we're going to approve the expense as well. You have it further on down?
No, Mr. Chairman, it was just added on twice. I apologize.
Okay, so then I'm going to scratch that bottom one. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we renew the ICrimp liability insurance for... What was the total amount, 300?
I believe it's 324,000, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct. That used to be 175,000 when I started.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Is there anything to sign on that?
There is nothing to sign, Mr. Chairman. I will just notify them that we will be moving forward with the renewal.
Okay, the next agenda item is an action item. This is a Paws contract for animal shelter and services. And this one was ran through legal. It does have the cover sheet. The total amount budgeted is $25,000.
Chairman, I would move that we approve them at Paws and Valley County contract for 2025.
I'll second that. That's same amount we had last year, I believe. You know? Yeah, I got it.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I apologize. I was just asking for the sheriff to bring the actual document up.
Okay, we got a motion, second to approve them at Paws animal shelter contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then for your information, Mr. Chairman, I did check it with Cascade Vet Clinic and they were not interested in any...
I understand. Yeah, thanks for looking into that. Okay, while you guys are signing that, we're going to move right on down. The next one is, this is an action item. This is agreement for pathology services between Valley County and Ada County. And...
I was a little concerned because it just says that it's coming out of the general fund, but there's no authorized amount. I mean, is it something that we can, you know, we at least put some type of financial lid on that thing?
Well, I think what we...
Without coming back to us or...
What we got to do is start including a budget line item for...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I apologize if that was not included, but there is a budgeted line item in the coroner's budget for $10,000 for these services.
Okay, so the authorized amount's 10,000?
That's correct. My apologies for not signing off on their putting that amount in. I did not.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve that. Prove the agreement of pathology services between Valley County and Ada County.
For 10,000?
Yeah, I don't have that up on my screen.
Yep, then I will second that motion.
Yeah, we got a motion, second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is also an action item. This is the agreement between Idaho State Police and Valley County Coroner's Office for forensic toxology. Toxology. And I don't believe there's a charge for this. This is, yeah, no cost for any kind of special investigations. If it's good with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I would move that we approve the agreement between Idaho State Police and Valley County.
Second, move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So this has already been signed? 61024, second ICrimp renewal on here. Oh, there we go. Okay, our next agenda item is an agreement for snow removal for the Valley County Prosecutor Attorney's Office. Title company, this is ran through legal. It does have the cover sheet. This will be month to month until we move into the facility, hopefully in March. And then our guys will take over. I don't know if there's a dollar expense.
$65 on it.
Is that what it was, 65 an hour?
65 per show up.
Per visit, $65 per visit.
Yep.
So I need a motion to approve that. I'll make a motion that we sign agreement for snow removal at Valley County Prosecutor's Office for $65. A fill-up.
I'll second.
Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Quing, did you happen to print off that agreement? Mr. Chairman, I'll have to print that off and bring it in.
Prosecutor's Office did. And the plan is once in March, we will amend the contract and they'll take over.
Okay, we're going to keep right on going. The next one is another action item. This is a contract for Axon tasers through Valley County. The amount is $12,488.21 per year for a five-year contract. Is that correct? Do you have the paperwork there?
Okay.
And...
That's just a different type of taser, is that what it is?
Taser, they're pretty hard to market. They have a five-year lifespan on them. If you use them and something goes wrong, they won't, they won't stand behind their product. They've got a five-year. So it's just, it's a constant renewal of the day. But this keeps them under contract where if something happens to you, you give them, they give you another one back and you're not mostly buying them. You know what your budget line is.
They take them back?
Take them back, but they'll give you about 30 bucks a piece for them. Yeah. Run the wrong gears.
Okay, everybody good with this? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move that we approve the contract for the Axon tasers, that we remain under warranty.
Second, move to second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Where's the last five years gone? It seems like we did that all this year.
Well, every year, yeah.
That's where I knew the contract was.
Oh, okay. But how long we actually had them? Because we purchased all new tasers through them. That hasn't been five years, right?
Five years ago, we did the TASER 60 program, which is what just ended. And now it's five years new one. So every year, you gotta do it.
It's been five years, that's crazy.
The old tasers are no longer, they're very tricky. They're no longer even supported.
Okay, we're going to keep right on going. The next one is the contract for our outside audit with Swigert and Associates. This amount is $23,000. Doug, I'm assuming that they're not doing the EMS for, we're not paying for that?
Mr. Chairman, that has not been fully determined who is going to be paying for that. I mean, the funds are available, but I don't know if the existing board is going to enter into an agreement for the audit. It's a little bit unusual because we're still paying claims.
Yeah.
So I, I haven't had an opportunity, pardon me?
Don't you think it would be us, so there's a clean break?
Probably. Um, that we'll be auditing that account prior to giving them everything. But I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the Secretary of Treasury to make sure that that is in case. That is in fact the case. So we'll be working on that, though.
They would give us a clean breaking point when they take it on, so... And Doug, does this include also the fair and rodeo?
It does.
Okay. I didn't see that anywhere called out.
So Doug, on the 18-5, this was audit and it showed another $4,500 for...
That's for the fair board.
Well, that's just for the fair board.
That's correct. So the 18-5, $18,500 is for Valley County's funds. And then the $3,000 is for the Valley County Fair Board.
Okay. Now I'll make a motion that we approve the audit for Swigert and Associates. Yeah, I just want to make sure you guys are clear. The 18,500 is from the county and the fee for a single audit will be 4,500.
Sorry.
So that's going to come out of fair?
That, no, it comes out of the general fund.
That's general fund too?
Yes, sir.
Maybe something to think about in the future. Okay, we got a motion, second to approve that contract. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Doug, do we even have a fair and rodeo line item? Or just the maintenance and Scotts?
That's the, and we have our separate actual fund for the contribution to the Valley County Fair Board. But those are the only two expense lines that we have. We, the only expense line that we have for the maintenance is in Scott's budget. And then we have a separate fund for the tax dollars that are received that are turned over to the fair board.
So could we take this audit out of those funds?
That would be a decision that the commissioners could make...
Can still sitting in there?
In the future.
I think I would definitely let the fair know that that's coming, but this year we should cover it. Okay, the next agenda item is an action item. This is review and sign the haunted barn and boo barn agreement for a special event on property owned and controlled by Valley County. Scott, you want to add anything to this?
No, but I received their insurance. It meets all the requirements for the county, so...
Scott, where's the agreement still lying that Allen is still on that? I thought we had updated that.
No, it must be online somewhere. They got it.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. If it's out there online, we need to pull that and...
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I changed it on here.
You changed it on there?
Yeah, I wrote it in myself.
Where's this at? Down the fairgrounds.
Going to be at the fairgrounds?
One of the red barns.
They use barns down there to set it up and stuff.
Cool.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, we approve review. We sign the haunted barn agreement for special event on property owned and controlled by Valley County. Do you have a second?
Second.
Move to second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Can you see if that agreement's out there? You want me to email camera or what would be?
Yeah, I can look and see if it's out there. I know it's something they have on file because they do this every year, so... Obviously it kept a blank or, you know, copied it or something.
Update soon anyway without moving on and leaving us.
Okay, we're going to keep going. The next agenda item is assign an amendment to the food service agreement with Summit. Like, do you have anything to add? I just see they went up a little bit about anywhere from 50 cents per meal to less.
Uh, no, just, yeah, it goes up every year. We counted for it in our budget.
Oh, the CPI, that's the 5%.
The, uh...
No, I had him reset this morning.
Legal put the new terms for the fiscal year that need to be in there.
162. And you're still happy with their service? No concerns, no complaints?
There's really not a whole lot out there, but yeah, they're good.
Somebody's died of starvation either way.
No.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve that.
I would move that we approve the food service agreement with Summit Food Services for 182,000 with a 24-25.
Second. Would you say on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Guys have a phone.
Our Xerox was working overtime.
Boy, I tell you, we're making paper like crazy in this morning.
Did I just date myself by calling the Xerox?
Mike, you want to sign this?
Well, guess what? None of us picked up on it. That's awesome.
Oh, man.
You have to order one.
Sheriff, would you be able to get the signature?
Hey, Doug, Michael. Hey, how are you? What's up with the shoulder?
Took my shoulder thing off. Oh, I had rotator cuff, Buck and Hay, and it all went down. Hay bale got away from me and I shouldn't, I shouldn't let it go. Your hand, but could you get the signature? So now I'm paying for it for, I don't know how many weeks they're going to make me wear that. From those two.
My husband turned over our razor while racing on the sand this weekend and rubbed three reds. And he's really enjoying it because he also has a cold, but he is sneezing and coughing.
Okay, and the last one, I believe, on the list is an action item. This is assigned to Valley County Sheriff's Office contract for counseling services with Ricky Davlin.
I love this. This is just awesome.
So this is...
This is great. This is for you guys.
This is part of the peer support program. We just need an agreement with the counselor that we have before we can pay her. Went through legal and it, the money is accounted for through the grant. So again, this is a reimbursable grant. So as we submit our claims each quarter, yeah, this is just for tracking purposes. Make sure she's good, we're good. And getting the services that are listed in that grant.
So you're at pace for everything. So I need a motion.
Chairman, I would move that we sign the Valley County Sheriff's Office contract for counseling service with Ricky Davlin.
Second. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you for going after that, Mike. That's important.
Can we get something like that for commissioners here?
Sheriff, I don't know if you've had this one for... Yeah, I've learned how to, a whole lot of stuff. Am I left? It's getting pretty good.
Can we get this to Summit and then get it back to Doug?
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Need this one for you, Lee.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Mike, Mike, I need this one too for you, Lee.
Doug's got a...
Doug's got a test.
Okay, signatures again.
That would be great. Thanks, Lieutenant. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you guys later.
Yep, have a good day. Be safe.
You.
Okay, we're going to move right on down our agenda. This is also an action item. This is Valley County Community Center Discussion Decision. Not sure what we're deciding on here, but...
So this was the conversation around the fact that we received that grant for the 250,000 to upgrade that building. And until we know for certain that the senior center actually is in there, they, our contract with them is expired. So we either need a new contract, you know, that they're actually going to be utilizing that building going forward. And we need, you know, we need to know how they're utilizing it so that, so if we accept this agreement, we're accepting in good faith that, because it's specifically intent on senior centers.
So there are representatives for that? Are they...
Who's that?
MI, the representatives for the senior center?
Um, actually, I have been working on this all last week. I apologize, I did not finish it up, but it's looking really good. There are five people on the board now. Bob Flaton, Rick McCoy, Cindy Rich. Those are the original three. And both Bob and Cindy have health issues. They had to kind of come off. Since then, they've appointed Hannah Chambers and the cook. Her name is Kayla Albert. And I've been working with Calvary Chapel and they have two or three people, including Cindy Rich, in their church that want to keep that functioning and going. I just have not confirmed how we're going to do, whether they're going to be on the board as board members or how that relationship is going to work with the existing board. I had a good long discussion with Oki on, I don't remember what day it was, Thursday, I think. And we're going to try and get this back, back going again. Rick McCoy, who's been kind of keeping the thing together, is very interested in working with anybody that will volunteer and help. I also have to remind the board that one of us is supposed to be on that board, the county commissioner, and I've been kind of that representative or liaison, but it's kind of tough when all your board members are aging out or having health issues. And I know a couple of them have lost their sight, can't drive anymore. So it's been kind of challenging, but I think we could resurrect this if you give me a little bit more time. And then what I think I'll do first is get another contract signed.
Do we have a deadline on this?
We should, I should be able to get it done this week. This next week, probably by tomorrow or Wednesday.
So one question. So we normally don't serve on boards unless it is something that is countywide. Why would we serve on the senior center just for Cascade?
Um, we're actually supposed to have one on McCall, too. It says in the, I don't know if you call it bylaws, but the makeup of the senior centers that there is a place for a county commissioner on each board. And we should be attending and going. And I've been doing all that stuff kind of on the side because they haven't been meeting. They haven't had a meal since first August. So we've got to get that fired back up. There's a lot of people depending on it for food. Uh, there's some issues. There's the area on aging funding that has not been applied for that I think we need to work on reestablishing that funding. And then there's also Meals on Wheels. And Meals on Wheels is kind of, the research I've done on it is they basically take over the center and they keep the funds to run the program. And the center just pays the cook. And so the, the last board decided not to renew that contract with Meals on Wheels because it was taking all their funds. And as you guys know, I think we throw $11,000 towards that every year. That's basically for the salary for the cook. He's a cook to cook two meals a week. I think if we can get some folks from Calvary Church involved, we're going to see a lot more meals. They're even talking with Kiawa and with, oh, man, I just went blank. He's a relator at Dave's office. Anyway, he's on that, member of that church. They want to do their own Meals on Wheels. They have a list of people that are homebound that can't attend and they are going to try and put something together. But I think my, my first issue is going to be, okay, then we need to expand that board and put you guys on that board so you have a vote. And then we need to renew that contract with them ASAP. I don't know about McCall. Do we have a contract with McCall, Doug?
No.
I don't think we've ever had a contract with McCall.
Well, we don't with McCall, I don't think, because they're not in our building. We have to have a contract because they're in our building. And so that's, that's where the contract comes in. And we've never charged them. I mean, we charged them a dollar so that there is a financial obligation. And I think last year, we did year to year. We didn't do the 10-year contract. So now it's an annual renewal of that contract. It's a dollar for them to use that facility.
Another thing you should know is that the church contract is up this month as well. And they renew that for $5,000 a year. And they are very interested in renewing that contract again from Calvary Church. The issue really honestly is we can't mix government funds with religious functions. So we got to be a very fine line there. And I think of the way it's going to work is we're just going to pull a couple of people out of, from their group that will help us manage and take care of the senior center. So be on the board, I hope.
The senior center really isn't a government function. I mean, technically, the only thing we have to do is the county is they're leasing our building for a dollar. So we're contributing to that. But we should have that MOU in place for that, that contract, that they're going to deliver services to seniors, you know, twice a week or whatever, since right now... Since right now, I think that's what that contract says, they're out of contract with us. And so, you know, giving them funding moving forward, they have to, they have to make sure they're open and contributing. I mean, the senior center is important. It's really important we keep this open for the community. But they also have to abide by certain rules if we're going to contribute to them, because these are taxpayer funds. And Ken, I would like to know what you need on that grant. I mean, that CDBG grant, it calls out specifically that this is for improvement of community centers and senior centers. And so it's, if we have a contract with them, is that enough? Or what, what do we need to do to prove that our seniors are utilizing this building?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, the contract certainly would spell that out, what they're supposed to provide. And I think just going through the review process with Department of Commerce and proving through, these are the publications that say we're open these days and we're doing these services, you know, showing whatever proof of, of records that Department of Commerce will accept to say, yeah, they're, they're still doing it. Uh, I think that having the contract moving forward and like Commissioner says, you know, we're adding to the board and supporting that and have a, I don't know if we need to write a statement of intent to continue. Certainly the contractor would do that if that's being honored. Uh, but you're right, the, the premise of the grant was for senior service providing. Uh, that was the, uh, the use of the structure and the use of the, the facilities that are being repaired and remodeled and updated. Uh, and to go outside of that, and I have had some conversations with reps at the Department of Commerce. Says if it goes outside of that, we need to re, have a rediscussion. And a, a reallocation or a resubmission is not out of the question. But since there was community meetings and input and, you know, this is what we said we were going to do, that was the guise that it was given under. And then to go outside of that, it's, it's just gonna take a recalibration of things. And then their board would have to accept that recalibration and say, yeah, well, we'll go ahead and fund it too, so.
So the, uh, is the contract from KL on Calvary Chapel, is that with the community center?
Separate. No, it's with us.
Is it with him?
It's with us. It's with us. And the money goes into our general fund. And it's due, I think, the 16th of this month.
Announced for the northern side of that.
The building.
And then it's split in half in the southern half is all the seniors. And that's where the kitchen is and, you know, where a lot of the work needs to be done.
Well, and then, I don't know if you guys remember last week, or I think it was last week, we paid bills. The power bill's been really high. There's two electric furnaces, one for the south, one for the north. And they're really old, old hosters, basically. And we need to update those. We need to update some doors and some windows. And then, excuse me, as Sherry said, there was some work to be done in the kitchen. You can't really have Formica countertops in a commercial kitchen. So we're looking at some of that as well.
We need to be really careful that we don't put money toward that northern end. So we are going to have to absorb the cost of that furnace. We can only do.
Well, the thing that, and I don't know, we need to talk to Scott, he's not here, was to convert to propane. If you could put some 90-plus furnaces in there, or 90-plus, make them a lot more efficient. These are the original furnaces, I think.
Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, we will be applying for CDBG in the future. I absolutely don't want to impact our ability to apply for something moving forward. So we need to meet whatever obligation it is that they're requiring. I'd rather give the money back right now, honestly, than, you know, forfeit any future opportunities there. Because that's how we're gonna build our center down at the fairgrounds, too, is through those CDBG grants. So, El, if you can maybe work.
I will work on that.
Make sure that we have everything.
Doug, can you give me a copy of their contract?
I can.
Maybe a new one? And I can get with them this week and we'll sit down. I don't know where, I'll have to ask them for their bylaws. I don't know how many they can have on their board, whether it's an unlimited number or not. But you have to realize that it's all of all volunteers. Nobody's getting paid other than the cook. So the burnout's kind of high there. There's not a lot of incentive to be involved in, especially when you age out or you have health concerns, you just can't do it.
And McCall has hired a part-time person to do that work, you know, to try and keep it going. And I think they've been writing grants, so these guys need to, you know, just get, get somebody involved that will write a grant for them and hire somebody so you don't have that level of burnout, because it is hard.
Sheriff, were you on the board when Margaret was the executive director?
Yeah, I was.
And that was funded through, what is it, AAA area on aging or whatever that, I can't remember the name of that state level funding. That's what paid that salary was. And they have neglected to fill those forms back out. To reapply it, I guess, every year, so to speak. And so we're gonna try and work on that as well.
And the other conversation is, you know, the church would like to buy that building. I think right now everybody's in agreement. We, we try and keep it, you know, because the seniors are important until we can come up with another place for them to go.
There's a big.
But that would be a long term.
White building up here. It's, it used to be a church. I don't know if it's still being used for anything. They're on the corner coming to town.
Um, that was the old Baptist church. And I thought that sold as a house, not a church anymore.
Maybe once we get a new community center at the fairgrounds, then we can transition that and sell, sell off that building. You know, that would be, that would help us transition to a new location in them also. But in the meantime, this discussion was specifically so that we make sure that we are meeting the obligations of the CDBG grant. And that they are in fact meeting the obligations that they have under their contract with us. And because we are doing those MOUs now with specific goals and objectives, we need to look at that. Make sure that we get that through legal and make sure there are some parameters of what they're supposed to be doing. I mean, they, they get the entire building for a dollar a year. We need to make sure they are in fact meeting their obligations for the seniors in this community.
Yep, I agree 100%. I think the action today would be to just hold this for further work. My, one of the issues I had last week trying to work on it was everybody was on vacation. Nobody was around, so wait for people to come back from vacation so we can sit down and firm all this up. And I'll try and get it done this week. I promise, Ken.
And we don't have a time deadline, do we? That we have to meet for summers or?
Uh, so my only timeline I'm aware of is when the project has to be completed by, and that is 2026. So we do have some time for the grant to, in that perspective. Uh, but I think that, like we're talking about here, the most immediate deadline or timeline is renewed contract and the intention and commitment to continue to provide those, because that's what the grant was written under. And then also that helps to, um, figure out a timeline and schedule for staff to prepare, to then go through all the process of contracts and all that stuff, too. So the sooner we can have that first question answered, that will kind of guide what the rest of staff can do between now and, and then.
Ken, do you know as far as insurance wise, is there gonna be a change in insurance for that building? If we convert to a propane instead of electric or?
I don't know. That would be a, a commissioner, a question for Doug maybe.
Right, Grant, probably.
I can't imagine that it would, Mr. Chairman, but.
Well, you guys remember, we put a new hood in that one last year over the stove, a new dry fire extinguisher system. And spent a lot of money on that kitchen. We still have some more to do there. But I think it's like everything that's run by volunteers. It's kind of going through a low time right now and we'll get it, we'll back up and.
You're gonna have more time available.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna come.
Work out, not you.
And now I can go.
Another old guy on the board?
Another old guy on the board, yeah. All righty, thanks. Appreciate it. So we're gonna move on. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is approved bids for the road shop. Dan, come on up.
Yay.
Finally, finally, we are here.
I could barely read your handwriting.
This is, this is, uh, a long time coming, so.
You're bringing a cake in celebration?
Yes.
Chocolate, buddy, chocolate.
One step at a time, okay? This is one step. But, um, so Dana and I went through all of the information that we received last week. I had confirmed, um, that our low, apparent low bidder had all of the, contracting licenses, not only for himself, but for his subs. That's confirmed. Uh, I think we can go ahead and move ahead with the apparent low bidder for the, for the new maintenance building, so.
And that was Stroff General.
Correct.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Thank you for doing that work, Neil.
Yeah, that made it a lot easier. So I'm gonna make the motion that we award the Valley County shop at Gold Fork to Stroff General for $4,220,000. And I guess my only caveat is let's hope there's not a lot of changes or you gotta be careful what we agree to when we're going through this. But I'm sure Dana will help us with that.
Yeah, he, he'll be, uh, walking us through the whole process. Uh, he had informed me, uh, that this will be his last, uh, facility construction on his books. Uh, in fact, the whole, um, in, in.
Insight.
Insight is planning to, uh, go into retirement mode, so.
Really?
Yeah.
He's gonna hang in there with us?
Yeah, he said this will be the last one that he has that will, he'll finish all the way out, so.
Well, I'm jealous.
So is he, is he in sight? Is that what that is?
Well, there's, uh, I think there's another partner with him, so.
Good for them.
So we're gonna have to probably look for somebody else if we do something down at the fairgrounds.
Yeah, I think you'll probably end up having to look elsewhere.
Um, before we vote on this, Doug, we had provided 3.5 from ARPA and 1.5 from county budget, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
So that's, so we're gonna have, what is that, $780,000 left? What is the plan for those funds?
Uh, I would hold until we know for sure where everything is gonna go. Because if we, if we somehow want to use those funds elsewhere and then there's a necessity in terms of a change order, I'd hate to lose it at this point.
Well, and not, not only that, but we have to pay Dana. I mean, so there's all the engineering costs, the general construction costs, too. So I don't know that we're under budget.
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't just say that, uh, we got free money.
No, I understand it, but I think what's important is that we prioritize if there is extra funds where it goes first. Second and third, and I would hope that we would consider saving, using some of that to remodel the downstairs of this facility, tear off the north half, what all, what all that's gonna entail, we don't know yet, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I wanna make sure that the, what was committed was 3.5 from ARPA and then the other 1.5 million was road department money.
Right.
So if the commissioners want to change that funding structure, I think some discussions will need to be made. But the additional money that was set aside was specifically from the road department.
And we're gonna have to have money for desks and, you know, stuff to move in down there, so there's gonna be capital.
Probably all gone before we even get that far.
I think so.
Well, I mean, there's gonna be some, uh, additional items that we'll have to purchase. But we're gonna try to take as much as we can from, from where we're at and work with it, so.
That's good to have a contingency to work off of. It's good to be in that position.
I would rather be there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know, how much did we actually give for the, for all of the, this is construction funds, but we also did all the planning. And so, I mean, I think that was a hundred and some thousand for Dana and.
And we've made some expense expenditures. I can give the commissioners a full breakdown of what is being paid and what is left to be paid to the architect.
I don't need that today, but.
We can definitely do that.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to award this.
I don't know if we have a second, Mr. Chairman. I apologize.
I thought Sherry said.
I second.
Okay, my apologies. I didn't catch that. Sorry.
To award to Stroff General the bid to re, to build a new shop at Gold Fork. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You will notify the board.
It's already been done. It's already been done. I had already confirmed it. And we've already said that we have an apparent low bidder with all of the other contractors. So we're, now we're working through getting an agreement established, so I'm working with.
The contract. Awesome.
We need to see a happy dance. El, this has been on your bucket.
Took 12 years, but we got it done. Awesome.
Okay.
I look forward to it. You know, have you talked to them? Are they gonna start this year or?
I haven't, I haven't got to that level. I thought, let's just get, get.
Get the contract.
But I haven't really seen a schedule yet, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
The word.
Yeah, Dan, push them a little bit. If they could at least get the dirt worked, some concrete in the ground. That would be, that would be great for starting next year.
Based on where we're at and, and weather potential here, I'd hate to have anything open and then.
Yeah, you don't want it to flood and freeze.
I don't know, but, you know, I watched how these guys down Lake Fork, they just kept working right through it and they kept going.
Yeah, I mean, there's some caveats to proceeding on in weather conditions. So you have to, you have to take with the good with the bad. And sometimes the bad happens, you know, long after, and then you have to clean it up, so.
Well, and you don't want it freezing while you're pouring concrete.
No.
The other thing I want to say is thank you very much for your return to the folks on West Roseberry Road and answering those questions. That means a lot to people.
Yep.
And to us as well, and thanks for doing that.
Okay, so just on that note, um, I'm working, currently I'm working with a geotech to do the, the boring investigations, because I think that's gonna be critical to figure out what we have to do there, so. I'm still hoping that we can get them out this, this fall, but if we can't, it'll be the first thing that we do next year, so.
Ken? Thanks. Good job.
Thank you.
So we have about 12 minutes to our next agenda item, so we're gonna go mute and we'll see everyone back here at 10 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, we're.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're at our 10 o'clock agenda item. This is not an action item, this is a workshop to discuss the application process for emergency management grants, and I'm not sure, I guess Ken, you're kind of the one that's running this show, so I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just provide just a few comments.
Sure.
Yes, I have, as you can see, commissioners and those in attendance, I had asked for a workshop to be presented to the commissioners for further discussion regarding application process for emergency management grants, because we have so many entities that are involved. And I think it would be wise of the county, specifically the commissioners, to create a policy and procedure, or at least a procedures of what grants would be applied for by what entity. Would it be our grant writer? Would it be our emergency services manager? Also, would our fire mitigation director be involved? Also, our planning and zoning coordinator? So I think it was, it's time for us to have a workshop before the commissioners, just to discuss the uniqueness of these type of grants and creating a procedure. So I don't know if, if everyone would like to come to the table, or you wanna.
Come on up here to the front.
That was why I had our grant writer, Ken, create this outline. I think everyone's been guided through the outline, to just begin this discussion. Commissioners, I appreciate you allowing us to place this on the agenda, so this can be done.
Well, I think this is a great idea, Doug, to kind of set out who does what, where and when. That's probably the big issue.
Now, everybody, just use your big boy voices, big girl voices. We have three mics down there and there's one up front, but it's really hard to hear online sometimes.
So the background part, I'm assuming, Doug, is those are basically four different areas that we've got to figure out who's in charge of what.
Yes.
So let's start at the first one, if that's our revenue. Ken, I'm not really sure who's leading this. FEMA grants, how does that work? Who's doing those?
Which ones are you referring to?
Will?
Why don't we do mine first, cause mines are easy?
Which ones are yours?
I have the EMPG grant, and I have the SHSP grant. That's the only two I do. You do not have to apply for those grants, those are automatic.
Slow down, just a minute. What was the second one, SHS?
SHSP.
That's stated.
His salary.
The EMPG grant, it deals with the emergency management office and its salary position. And the SHSP grant is an equipment grant that we can utilize. I can tell you a little bit about those, and how they get that funding, if you want.
Does the two, what that funding can be utilized, specifically the SHSP grant?
So it can utilize for, they have a whole list of things within, I'll get to that point. Let me start with the, the grants themselves. The EMPG grant can be used for a whole bunch of things, but we use ours, primarily use ours for helping pay the salary of the emergency manager position in its office.
And that's a 50/50 match?
It's a 50/50 match, so we get around $28,000 some odd dollars, up to $30,000, depending on how FEMA regulates that funding.
And so, Juan, do you apply for that every year?
No, it's automatic. The only thing we have to do is we have to sign the supplemental agreement, because the money actually goes to the state, FEMA, and then FEMA allocates it with, state allocates it with an algorithm based by FEMA rules and regulations. It's made primarily based on population. So each county gets a portion of the funding that's given to the state, so then it becomes a supplemental grant from the state, because the grant, the state's the one who actually applies for the grant. They get it, and then they distribute it to the counties based on populace. So based on our populace, we get, depending on how they determine what percentages are gonna go, it fluctuates from about $28,000 to $32,000 a year. And it's a 50/50 grant, so they'll pay 50% of that supplemental grant.
So they use census data every year to?
It's census data, and then FEMA comes with a percentage that they're allowed to give to each county based on that census data. So that's where it fluctuates, because the percentages is different every year, that they get to do, reapply for that grant, for each, for each county, the 44 counties. So then we get the grant, and in order to get the grant, you have to sign the supplemental agreement, which goes to Mr. Oke. Mr. Oke reviews supplemental agreement. You come in, you sign the grant. Once you sign the grant, the grant becomes in effect, and we can utilize that funding, and it'll have a sunset date. So EMPG grants are a year long, and the SHSP grant, which is utilized for equipment, and there's all kinds of equipment. There's radio equipment, interoperable communications, there's terrorism, there's 911 needs, there's a whole plethora of things, other than like generators. They don't supply generators anymore and those types of equipments.
Mostly commu, what about mountaintop repeaters?
Mountaintop repeaters, controllers. We can, we utilize a big portion of this last grant cycle, because we had just finished the cycle of going through each of our mountaintop repeaters and controllers. We used a big portion of it to pay for this interoperable communication study, so that we could see where we were and where we're gonna move forward. And then with this grant, we could determine, do we need to go back to, now going back to square one with our repeaters and controllers, and start replacing those, because that's about, spends actually the majority of not all of the grant every year, because to replace a controller and repeater costs about $30,000. That's about what we get, just a little over $30,000 in SHSP. That is 100% paid for, we don't pay for any of that. We just have to do what the grant supplemental agreement asks for, and that grant supplemental agreement asks for. One, we get the supplemental data signed. Two, we spend it on things that are listed in their categories list. Three, we do the milestones of those. So I, I as the emergency manager go in, as I'm writing the grant, I do, are writing rather, the milestones for that grant, and how we're gonna accomplish it, to utilize all the funding mechanisms in the projects. I'll put the milestones in, and then every quarter I have to evaluate those milestones and put where we're at, with a description and what percentage are we are from the onset of the project, to the execution, to the control, to completion of the grant. And then I put in for the reimbursement for the vendor.
Now, doesn't the county also throw, is it five grand a year into mountaintop repeaters?
That's something that's different. That is for interoperable communications of a T1 line that goes up to certain areas of the county. That's a different fund, not coming out of SHP, and not going to mountaintop repeaters or controllers.
So just so I can understand better, the discussion in LEPC is update all the radios, that's where this funding would be used?
We could use a portion of the funding, if not all the funding, like we used a big portion of this last year's funding to pay for the study.
Right, right.
$30,000, that's not gonna get us a lot of.
Well, we spent more than $30,000, cause we used two, we used last year's grant and a portion of this year's grant to pay for that study. So generally, that's what we can do. We can, you can utilize multiple grant, multiple, cause sometimes we have a little bit in the coffer, and because we didn't have any more, rather, a little bit of fund balance, because we didn't, we had, didn't have a repeater controller to replace, we had some funding mechanisms. So you, as the board, asked me to see if we could use that funding. I changed the narrative, changed the milestone. We can do that midway through the grant cycle, and then they issued us the money and said that's still for interoperable communications, granted, pay your vendor to do your study.
So does LEPC pretty much the ones that decide which the SHSP grant is used for?
Yes, so the way it works is, so we get all the stakeholders together in the local emergency planning committee. We do have a subcommittee called the communications committee, where its commissioner sits on. Commissioner sits on the LEPC as well. Anybody can ask for those fundings, but generally, we, we're all in agreeance that it needs to go for interoperable communications. So 911 determines how they're gonna use that, utilize that funding, or for any changes to that grant. Usually, it's always interoperable communications in some fashion or form. They come to LEPC, everybody reviews it, we get in the grants, and then that's when I finish the milestones and put it in, and tell you guys, we're putting it for interoperable communications. And generally, up until this last year, it's always been for mountaintop repeaters and controllers, because they're so expensive and we don't have a funding mechanism to continue that cycle as they start to sunset out and get old and outdated. So we just have a mon revolving thing that's handled by the dispatch supervisor and the sheriff, and they keep that list with us along, as well as the chair of the communications committee.
Juan, if you could really briefly kind of explain, so everybody knows who's on LEPC?
So LEPC is made up of all the stakeholders, not just first responders, but we have schools, we have the hospitals, the clinics, Idaho fishing game, anybody who has a stakeholder in any kind of emergency planning has a position at our seat. The cities.
Forest service.
Forest service also, actually, will. Forest service also actually will sit there, but generally, they, they let the fire working group chair handle the information for them, which is me at this time. And then I take that back to the fire working group. But if we do need them at a meeting, they will participate.
You said that the EMPG grant, we find your position with it and we get between 28 to 32. You said it can be used for many things. Can we ask for different funding mechan, you know, can we ask for more than that 28 to 32?
That's, that's what we're given per the algorithm. Now, if you take money to do something like, I can use it to go to a conference for emergency manager, but I never do that because that would take away from the wages and then, so I want to make sure that you're getting the full 50% for your wages so that, because we, our budget's so tight with the emergency manager salary. So we want to make sure we get as much, we get all that 50% of that grant cycle to help pay, pay that portion so that you only have a remainder to pay. So we have no other money to put anywhere else, which is fine because I just do the conferences on my own if I do one. And generally, my district feels it's important that I go to those conferences, so they help me with those costs. So because they're usually a fire related cost as well or, or I'm speaking at a conference, like the last conference, the Yale one, the wildland cohesive strategy one, I actually spoke on that. They pay for everything, so we didn't have to pay for it.
Juan, is emergency manager position becoming, should it be a full-time position in your estimation?
I treat it as a full-time position, but that's just because my Commissioners allow me to do that. I think it goes hand in hand with what I do every day. So I will tell you this, 18 years ago, I became chief. I never utilized the county emergency manager. I did it on my own because the emergency manager, I have no idea about fire. So he was there. He'd always delegate authority to me and we handled the fires. Hence then, I've always been in every fire since then for him. And then when I became emergency manager, I was already there. As fire chief, I already attend all the meetings and participate. I'm already networked with the entire state and with FEMA Region 10 and with USDA, not only here, but with DC because of my travels. So yep, it's a full-time position, but I deal, I do too full-time positions. It's not a big deal for me. I would be participating no matter if I was the EM or not because I'm your subject matter expert. And honestly, I'm a subject matter expert for the state when it comes to wildland because I help every other county. Like I spent time in Boise this county this year. I've spent time in Adams. I've spent time in Custer County. I've actually been really all over. I've actually helped Ada County with some things the last couple of days because they have questions and usually they say you need to call Juan because Juan probably has the answer. So.
They should be paying your salary.
They do. They pay half of it. So, yeah, so I mean, I would be participating whether I was the EM or not. So it's just easier if I'm the EM because I'm already there.
So on the fire side, is there, are there things that you work on for the emergency manager that's not fire related?
So we do floodplain stuff. We do any of the avalanching, any, any oh-hazard stuff, you know, it doesn't have to be fire. I've had all of them. Sometimes I've had four at one time where we've had an avalanche and all kinds of things happening at one time. So I've seen pretty much everything we have to offer here. So like I've told all of you before, I'm, I'm here as long as you need me and I would be participating in any fashion or form whether I was the EM or not because more than likely the state's going to have you call me so that I can help you through the process. So it's just easier for me.
I think lately, Juan's been really cutting the mustard. We've had fires since, in the middle of August.
Since July 24th, sir.
Yeah, a few days, Juan.
I quit counting because it's just too cumbersome. And then, yeah, I will tell you, this weekend was a little disheartening for the sheriff and I because we actually had plans to do things with their families and all of a sudden it was, you have to come from your camping trip, Juan, sorry. So I mean, that's just how it goes. Being a first responder too, I'm able to do that because I'm used to it. Been doing this for 32 years, so it's pretty easy for me to be like, and the family understands that I have to cancel things, but.
What I'm hearing is that you feel it's really important that you keep those two under you.
So I will tell you, I talked to the area field officers and IOEM as soon as this meeting came up about these two grants. And there, do not promote, advocate or anything of taking away the EMPG or SHAP from the emergency manager. Other counties have tried and it's too cumbersome because the EM still has to do the milestones, the EM still has to do the quarterly updates, the EM still has to close it out, still has to request the funding, still has to do all of these things because I'm the only one who has access as the emergency manager to the Idaho grant management system. So it's just easier if I maintain those two. Those are the only two I do. Any other grants that I get like BRIC or anything, floodplain or wildland or whatever, I just ship those out to the steering committee and the individuals so that they can see those grants are available. Sometimes it's redundant and they get that email twice. El does the same thing. He'll send me and I already got it, but I still send it out. So that way everybody's up to par on what grants are available that I don't manage. So and then if I need to help with the grant, I could help with the grant, which I've helped with a couple of BRIC grants, like with the city when they first started really getting into it, which I really appreciated them using the all hazards mitigation plan for those. So I helped them and get them with the right people at the Idaho Office of Emergency Management to start those grants. And then the other is, is anytime we get an FMAG or there's FMAG money available, if not all that money is used after the fact because we have the hazards mitigation grant that comes out after FMAGs, like we have three FMAGs that were in the state this year. If they don't utilize all that funding, that'll become available. And then I'll see what the narrative allows for, for us to utilize those. And then I'll throw them out to prospective agencies and the grant writers so that they can determine, can we apply for those and who do we need to contact to do that? Generally, it's Idaho Office of Emergency Management, Susan Cleverly or Lori Fall.
If we have an FMAG though, are you managing that or does that go to the?
It goes to the grant writer.
So Juan, can you use FMAG on fair recommended?
EMPG funding can, the hazard mitigation grant can be used for those things. Yes, that'll be listed. If you had a fire in 2024, here are things that you could utilize the grant for. We could utilize it for us and then I would, generally, it's road department stuff because it's always worried about what's going to happen with the next runoff. So I'll go straight to the road supervisor. Here's an opportunity for grants. It meets the all hazard mitigation plan because we have a broad statement of cisterns and oversized culverts. You can do it. It meets the grant. If you want to do work there, apply for that grant. So that's what we did the last time.
Is it a cost share grant or is it 100%?
There is a portion of it that's cost share, but I think it's 10%. I'd have to check those numbers, so I'll quote beyond that.
Okay, where do we want to go next?
Well, first I want to thank Juan for that information and I totally agree with everything that, that was presented and what he said there. I fully support the emergency manager keeping, you know, keeping the status quo for, for the time being. There's a wealth of knowledge there that is absolutely beneficial. So the other grants or the other opportunities that are kind of on the list there are things like FMA grant, like you again mentioned there. And then the BRIC grant, building resilient infrastructure in communities and then the flood mitigation assistance grants that as, as was mentioned, are not the response grants like the, and the EMPG grants, stuff like that.
So you do those? Do you do all those?
Well, that's to be determined. I think that's part of the conversation of what, who's doing what within, within the programs, within the total scope of the FEMA world. And I think that's part of the question that, that Doug has is who is doing what? You know, because there are agencies that, you know, that have to have a project for like the BRIC grants and the FMA grants. So it's not like a, a county wide or global type of, of project. It's, it's an entity. So the county corporate would have a project for a BRIC grant that doesn't involve the city cascade or, or the other cities. So I think that's part of the question is within those grants, within those programs, where, where, who does what within an entity, within the field of emergency management? Because they are specialized into an agency for specific projects. Writing the grants, I see that the role of the grant writer is to assist the subject matter experts in development, in administration, making sure the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. But I don't see the role of the grant writer as a subject matter expert. They would work in partnership with committees, groups and program managers to help facilitate that.
And then who would manage the grants, the expert or you?
So carrying out the project work would be the subject matter expert. And then working, getting that information collected on progress reports, status reports, expenses, requests for funding, stuff like that would, would come back to a focal point such as the grant writer who would be interacting more with the, the provider, so IOEM, rather than taking the time of the, the project manager or subject matter expert kind of dealing with the bureaucracies of, of government and those types of things. That would be the burden back through that, that central point of control access into, much like what Juan has is the emergency manager has a central point of access for Valley County Emergency Management into IOEM. Specific projects, it, one way of approaching it is to have the grant writer be that central funnel point. And then if there's questions that come in from the state or from the feds and they can funnel to the project manager whose time isn't all taken out by that one project or that one process.
So if Mara came with you for a BRIC application or Cindy came with you with a flood application, they would provide all the necessary details, the data, the stats, and then you would actually file for the grant, actually fill out the forms and file it?
I, I believe that's how.
As the grant is going through on the expense accounts and where the money's going and all that, but it all comes back to you in the middle?
Yeah, that, that central point of qualities, projects and making sure that, that these two have all the information they need so we can funnel it into, into the process. Questions come back out, then go out to the subject matter experts as well. So yes, I believe that is.
Is that how it's working now?
Do we have any of these grants out there?
That I'm not as familiar with on what we currently have for BRIC or FMA.
I don't think we have.
Other than the planning grant for the hazard mitigation plan update, which I know Juan has been waiting on the answer back from to head up that project.
Juan, if you want to share.
I believe that Mara's grants are through a different funding opportunity right now. That's more in through state, state resources, the state funds and Mara.
That's the GNA and all that stuff?
Yes, there's the GNA and then the Idaho Department of Land's grant. Basically work on the ground so that hazard reduction work on the ground.
So you fill out, you know, the data, do you give it to Ken and apply or do you apply?
So in the past, and this is something that I haven't currently done, so I'll refer back to Stephanie and how she's done it, but it sounds like she's applied for a lot of the grants herself because like he's saying, a lot of it is subject matter expert providing all the data.
Before we go there, let's go back for a second. So what I'm hearing was something a little bit different than what I think you were talking about because you said you're not the subject expert and that you would assist them in writing the grant. But what I'm hearing is that you are going to write the grant with their assistance.
Well, the way that I have experienced the grants is there are different sections of it and there are parts of it that I would be more familiar with of it, such as the process, making sure that all of the federal requirements are accounted for and they're met. But the details of when the rubber meets the road, I'm not a road person. I'm not, you know, a subject matter expert in flood mitigation. So that's where I would rely on their assistance to write the narrative of what are we doing? Why are we doing it? Assistance and how much it's going to cost and, and those types of part of it. So it wouldn't just be one person writing the whole grant. It would be the persons who have the knowledge in that area would write those parts of the grant. And then the, the central collection point would be to make sure that all the, like I said, all the federal assurances are met, that the narrative is inconsistent, is consistent with the, the program, with the intention of the program and to try to make sure that that narrative will be successful when it goes for review before the, the committee reviewers.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because I may come up with a project and I'm not going to have time to write that on my behalf. So I'm going to be able to turn it over to my grant writer and make sure that that grant is written. And I know, I mean, I would, I would anticipate input from a subject matter, but I would think that you would be the main person writing that grant, requesting information as you needed. That's the way I would see that.
Well, as a commissioner, what happens is you get notified, a lot of different grants are available. Highway grants, road grants, you know, and it just goes on and on. And it's like, well, this might work for us, but I don't know any specific need. So I funnel that to you or I funnel it to Mara or even to Juan. And hey, is this something we can use? I'm not the expert. To me, what I want to make sure that we, we accomplish is that everybody works together. You know what makes a good application and they know the data and the information and the dirt work. Together, we can put this together and build it. It's not like I'm competing against you or they're not competing, we're all working together and we got to keep that.
Yes, absolutely. And in the case that you mentioned there, here's a good idea for that. What would be helpful in, in processes like that is I have an idea for a project, go talk to Cindy about, you know, what this might mean for us. And then we could collaborate and come up with a, a scope or a, a narrative and come back to you and say, is this what your intention was with, of, you know, your thoughts on this project? So yeah, each, each grant and every process, each process is going to be a little bit different. And yeah, none of us are SMEs on every part of the process. But yeah, there's an idea generation, then you got to kind of fill out the details of what that idea means. And then we go and look for, how do we, how do we fund it or how do we, how do we advance it? And you know, like you're saying, it is a, in my belief, it is a team effort. It, it's not one person's, you know, charge to, to be wholly successful across the board.
And I think you would keep us on task because there may be a deadline that we have to meet and I think that would be your task is, you know, we have to have all this stuff done in two weeks, a month, or whatever it is. We're either going to make it or we're not. And in order to make it, we need your assistance and help.
Yeah, and, and I see that as well. That's, that's one of the, the charges of, of that central collection point is to, to identify and, and spell out, okay, here are the timelines, here are the deadlines, do an estimation of how much work it's going to take to, to, for that timeline and deadline. Keep on task with, you know, pretty, anything before the board, say, okay, this is our status report as far as progress. Here's what we still need to progress, you know, still need to do by, by this timeline. Getting on board agendas to do that as well as committee agendas and, and just a timeline laid out for that. So that's where my understanding of the grant writer's role and benefit will be for helping the community to, to keep advancing those things forward. And it's not just one area. I mean, emergency management is one area that this position is involved in. There's also roads and recreation and the whole county. So emergency management, wildfire, FMA is one part of that whole picture. And that's one of the reasons that I don't think that, that one person is SME for the whole process because they're, they're so diverse across the, the community of the grants that are out there.
So Ken, it's a dumb question on my part, but if someone comes to you, anybody comes to you and says, hey, I'm thinking about applying for this grant, and you look at it and you say, you know what, this is a lot of damn work for very little money. I don't think it's worth the effort. Do you make that call?
I do not make that call. I put the input for that into, you know, back into what the decision makers are. So yeah, there are some grants that, you know, the due date is next week, but it takes a year's worth of work to put it together. And, and I, I see that as part of the, the experience of the grant writer is become familiar with the different grants, the different timelines, the different effort it takes to put into it. And some of them may be a whole lot of effort for very. effort for very little reward. Some of them may be a lot of effort for very little reward, but it's important. And so, you know, looking out the long cycle of it, you know, one, three, five years out, knowing that things like these, since the topic is our federal grants or FEMA grants, they come up every year. You know, it's an annual thing. You know, they, in October, when the feds start their fiscal year, they go through and determine how much they're going to give. In November to December, they come out with their notice of funding opportunities. So we already know this year that about this time next year and the year after, and the year after, that there's going to be a likely, a program, an amount with priorities that we should start preparing for now that align with our programs, our priorities, our needs, and start putting together those applications and elements now. The experience I've had is that typically those don't change too much. You know, each one is going to change a little bit, they're going to have their priorities that come up. But the baseline of all those are going to be pretty consistent year to year. And so, you know, part of the timing of everything is recognizing now that next year, this is coming up again, we don't have time in the next week to put together, you know, a deep study, but we can do it over the course of the next year and apply for it next year.
And what would be important to me, too, is like, we found out in the S Bridge, we had applied for some grant funding. Well, you have to have a planning grant first. So now we're in the middle of the planning grant before we can actually go to the construction grant. So, you know, that would be important also, is that we know you have to have this grant first before you can go for this grant, before you can go for that grant.
Yeah, sequencing of projects and stuff.
Okay, who's next?
What's the next one?
Mara, Steph. Does Ken help you guys a lot on your grants? Did you fill them all out yourself?
Actually, just from a historical perspective, I have written all of the grants that have anything to do with Idaho Department of Lands. And I believe it's been a successful process, because we've never not received a grant that we've applied for. But what is unique to the Idaho Department of Lands is they employ a grant writer on staff that's there and available to us at no cost, or not to us. They take, I don't know, 30% of the grant right off the top of, you know. So it's, they're invested in making sure that those grants are really put together on the final version to be submitted. But it's been reliant on me to do all of the ground truthing, to utilize our risk data so that we understand where areas are important, to work with the fire working group, to make sure that we're all on the same page about where work can be accomplished. So there's a lot of ground truthing and time that goes into that before you put it down on paper. But I'm convinced that our relationship with Idaho Department of Lands works because they understand all of that information. And when they receive it in a format that they've asked for it to be submitted in, they do then take that and do what a grant writer would do, which is put it into a vernacular and a format that's going to be well met during the very competitive process of having these grants funded. So it's really a great thing for Valley County, because they're lending us their full-time grant writer, because it's important to them. So while it doesn't necessarily say you shouldn't work with your in-house grant writer, the point is, is that you have those additional resources that work really well for you. And then, of course, you know, determining the rest of the procedures in in-house, that's, you know, we only went in-house four years ago, as far as actually having an employee in the county be responsible, office of record. And that had its ups and downs with me being outside of the office, because the communication wasn't always at the point where it needed to be. You know, just certain things that folks just shouldn't be filling out because they think they should, you know. But we have such a good relationship with IDL, they'll come back to us and say, hey, you know what, did you really mean to do that? Let's... So now that Mara is in-house, I don't see that being a problem. But I also don't see, they've hired another replacement grant writer, I don't see that access changing. So that's just a boon for her program and for the county.
So two questions. Fire working group, is that separate than LEPC or is that all one?
It is not all one, it is separate.
So it's fire working group. And then you said that they take 30%?
IDL. Yeah, they apply, we apply for grants that are anywhere from 220 to 240, 100,000.
30%, that's-
And then they apply for a grant that's, the way they set it up, it's kind of funny math, but they set it up so that they're $300,000 grants. And then the state matches it with $300,000. Of course, that's from their internal structure, it's not hard cash. But then, when things wiggle on down and y'all sign the MOU and the money is assigned, depending on what that grant is actually going to come here, they take 60, 70,000 of it. And for that, they provide all of those services. And they provide on-staff support for the programs. And there's-
That's a lot of money.
Nothing we can do about it.
I'm assuming, though, that that's the cost you have to pay to get the grant. That's just the way it is.
It's not an option. It's not a negotiation. And, I don't know, it's work because, gosh, how much money we can borrow in. And I don't think without their support and background, I don't think we would have seen that many counties don't. So it's just the cost of doing business with them.
So Mara, are you assuming to kind of take that rollover?
Yeah, I mean, especially like he's saying, being the subject matter expert, I do think we can work hand in hand. I did invite him to come to the training down in Boise the first week of November. So we'll both, if he's available, go down to that and kind of discuss further procedures. One thing that I noticed specifically with Mackenzie that she helped facilitate was like, when we did receive the grant, she helped facilitate all the W9, W2s, the W9s, all that kind of documentation. And she did help with the first reimbursement. But I do know, like, we can kind of discuss a little bit further, but it was, we can make the process a little bit more fluid. But a lot of the documents that we need for these IDL grants, I have to facilitate. This department has to give to the grant writer to do a reimbursement. So whether that's, it's easier for me just to do it or not, that's yet to truly be determined, because right now, I've just been keeping track of the finances as I go. And that's one thing that's nice, that it is in-house, is I can access that stuff. So as reimbursements are coming in from our contractors, I'm immediately going to my reimbursement sheet and just grabbing the warrant and putting it and attaching it. Or that's where Mackenzie would do that for Stephanie in the past. And then Mackenzie would request all the documents from Stephanie. And so basically, there's like 10 different documents. There's maps, there's shape files, there's the contractors, the landowner agreements, there's documents of what kind of work you accomplish on the ground. So all of that stuff has to be provided by my department anyways. It's not something he can put together. And so I've been put in already as a package. So I'm not saying we can't figure out the office within ourselves, but it hasn't-
It's interesting that you do the W9s. I would assume that would have been like a function of the writers' office.
And that is what Mackenzie did with the grant, this East McCall grant. So I didn't have anything to do with that besides being attached to the email at that point. So-
It's like I said, the subject matter experts for certain parts of it, and each different part has a person who can help facilitate or collect or, you know, contribute to that package. As far as who pushes the submit button, I think that's something that the parties can work out, you know, who is going to be the primary point of contact, who is going to be facilitating internal information, providing to that for the county. And those are all things that I think each department, each project can work with to determine what those roles are. And that's kind of what I was talking about, the subject matter expert. You know, there's a lot of things that need to be put together that I don't have access to for that specific process, where we should work together to pull it together when support is needed for W9s or what other staff reports. And, you know, that project manager or project leader doesn't have, have the time or the contacts or whatever to kind of help facilitate or gather that. That could be a role or an assignment for the grant writer position. So it's definitely, in my opinion, putting together a team to be able to facilitate the whole process.
And with your guys is, I mean, I just take names off of it. Right now, we have two amazing humans with great skills. And if, in the future, five years down the road, Mara gives us two-week notice and leaves, you've got to have a grant writer that knows how to pick up that slack. And so if it's so siloed that we don't have cross-training, then it becomes an issue for the county at the end of the day.
And that's another advantage of the teamwork and being, you know, having multiple people involved in these whole processes. And like I said, you know, across the whole of the county, there's a lot of them, as you know. So I think that's benefits of teamwork approach.
And also just, Doug?
Can I ask a question? Mr. Oki, when do you think that legal needs to be involved? From the beginning, the middle? Can you provide?
Yeah.
Needs to be involved, I'm sorry, in what, Doug? In the signing a contract?
In the process. I think at some point in time, legal needs to be involved with reviewing the agreement or-
So there's been, I've gotten quite a bit of question about how legal needs to be involved or review grant applications. And I think there's kind of this blending of contracts with grants. And those are, in my view, those are two totally different things. So, you know, grant applications are, they're typically pre-prepared, you know, it's just something that you review, you have to identify whether or not you have the, you qualify for the funding and then submit it. So I don't necessarily think that legal needs to be involved in the application process. The part where we can be of service to you, and it really comes down to if you have a question or not, is once you receive the grant, how do you put that money on the ground? You know, as a recipient of the grant, are you going to be required to use a third party to spend the money? Then there's going to be a contract involved. And that's where we would, because of our contract policy, be involved there. But if a Valley County program or department is just going to use the funds consistent with the deliverables that are required in the grant, you just need to hit those milestones, make sure the reports are back to whoever the grantor is. And I don't necessarily need to be involved, or already doesn't need to necessarily be involved. So we're always available to answer questions. If you have some concerns about, you know, some of the policies surrounding that, the grant, we're happy to look at that kind of thing. There are, I mean, I'll give you some examples that, you know, they're really only hypothetical, because I don't know that I've run across them yet. But the state has policies in place, and those policies have been reduced to statutes that says that county governments can only use certain funds for certain things. And there's, dollars from any source can't be used on things that are against state policy. So we can look for, now, state grant, that's already been ironed out. If we're getting federal grant and it's directing us towards things that might be a foul of state policy, then we can review, we can review those things. But it's not like, it's not like contract review, where we're going to have a cover sheet and I'm going to sign off, I'm going to send it to Doug, and he's going to sign off. We're really just looking for, are the funds that you're receiving, and are they going to be spent, consistent with policies of the state and doesn't violate any laws? A couple times, we have seen in grant awards that there are requirements in there that says you have to follow all the state and local laws and ordinances. So you may have to go to planning and zoning, get a conditional use permit to build a campground, or to do, you know, some renovation work at a boat ramp, for example, a couple that we've seen. So those are areas where grants have come our way and we've provided legal advice to help comply with state and federal laws. But it's going to be a little bit different than contract review. We're not, I don't have a cover sheet for that. We'll just communicate all the recommendations and then it's up to the department to make sure you meet all of the milestones that are required in the grant.
And that's where we've gotten a little bit of trouble in the past, way past, was money was handed over to a contractor, but the job wasn't really completed yet.
Right.
And I think that's where we all got to be careful, as far as when we get down to the end, and the grant is fulfilled and everything is hunky-dory, make sure that those payments have one or two things or something, or some kind of a process where we've all approved that, so that you don't put yourself in liability approving that.
If the dollars are passed through dollars and they're going to come to the county, and then they're going to be sent out to a third party, that probably more than anything is just essential that we have a written contract in place, because now we've got grant milestones that we add on top of all the other legal requirements that we've got to capture in that written agreement with deadlines, with receding, and with reports that have to be sent back to whoever the grantor is. And so that's where I think we're going to play the most prominent role, is when we've got third-party recipients for these dollars. And they have to be aware of all of these milestones, because they are just as much responsible for spending the money and reporting back as we are. And if they don't do that, then we're liable.
And I think as county commissioners, we should be on top of that as well.
Yeah.
That's our main function.
So centralizing, centralizing the process, where you've got a grant writer that is going to keep track of these things, is going to help immensely. When you have it spread out and everybody's just kind of doing their own thing, these are the kind of details that it's easy to just forget and you just, you know, you're not keeping on top of it. So you have a centralized process where Ken's kind of overseeing that. That's the kind of thing that I would trust, that that's how he spends his time, is making sure that these milestones are being met and we're holding our third-party contractor to counter the agreement that we have with.
And the other thing that I think we need to kind of keep in mind is that there's a lot of grants that you probably don't know about, like whatever staff or Mara or Juan, whoever. To me, I think he should be informed, not just because he wants to stick his nose in it, but because I can put this on a schedule. And I know that in September next year, this is going to be coming back around. And to be a conglomerate of that information, you hear a lot about congressmen, well, I brought 14 million dollars home in grants. It would be great if we got at the end of the year, at the county level, saying, hey, we brought in half a million dollars in grants for a lot of these functions, so that we can show constituents, we're not just on tax, our tax dollars. I think that's important. So it's maybe more of, I'm going to inform Ken that I just applied for and got an IDL grant for $230,000, even though he doesn't have anything to do with it, just so that he can categorize it and keep it in the group to, as a summation of that information for us.
And make sure deadlines are being met.
I think that's the key, is one, you've got to, you've got to evaluate the conditions of the grant to ensure that you qualify. And that you don't have a project in mind that is going to be, that's not going to be eligible for the money. Because if mistakes are made at that point, then we're looking at, well, we've got to refund, we've got to refund those grant dollars back because it was an ineligible award. And you don't ever want to be in that position. So, you know, I think that's a task that Ken can accomplish unless he has a legal question, we can help with that. I don't expect that I need be that person, or that our office needs to be that person. But where I see the biggest legal risk for the county is, once the award is given to the county, then it's the downstream use of those dollars and how you report that back to the grantor. Because I've never seen a grant where there has not been some sort of a requirement to show how the money was spent, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual written report back to the grantor that demonstrates, we gave you the money, you promised this is what you're going to do with it, you went out and spent it within the timeframe that it was, and you have to report that back. So that's where you got to really-
I know what else means- Well, I know it helps me a lot, when I know that, hey, I know the Sheriff's Department is going to get a grant for tasers, or body armor, or bullets, or whatever, that that money's going to be coming in at this time of the year. That helps me look at, okay, I'm not going to have to fund that, because I know we're going to get that in the future.
And, and Ken, or, you know, whoever's involved may not, may not know all the requirements that you have to go through to build a campground, for example. You may not know that you have to go get a conditionally used permit from planning and zoning. Or if you're going to extend a boat ramp out into the river, there's Clean Water Act permits from the, you know, stuff like that. I mean, typically, those are going to be called out in the grant, but if there are questions about, you know, what do we have to do to make sure that we're in compliance with state and federal, and state, federal law and local ordinances, that's where we can help.
Well, and if you think about it, with the Sheriff's Department, the Road Department and, and, and House stuff, there's a lot of grants. There's a lot of money comes into the county from outside that, I think it's great to just have a catalog of, here's where it is, when it comes in, when we can kind of think about when we're going to get that money. That's huge.
How is the Sheriff's Office engaging currently with the grant writer?
We're kind of working that out right now. But I think, uh, for us, it's always need-based. We need this, and so we come to him, say, hey, we need this, can you find a grant? I like that he's the facilitator, and then comes to us for requests, like, I need this information, we can get it to him. That, that works best for us, because we also have other things going on. So it's nice that he has the expertise to deal with that grant, and we can just give him the stats, get him whatever he needs, and then he can take care of it.
So when you guys get notified of a grant's available, you give it to him?
That would be the, the desired process.
And that could maybe kind of some of the policy that we need to talk about is, you know, it's all really just communicating with each other. And I don't have time to apply for the grant, here's a grant for new tires or something. And, you know, you gotta, you gotta share it with everybody, so that we can catalog that and keep track of that and know that that could be available on an annual basis.
And commissioners, I apologize for interjecting here, but these are all great conversations. But what we were trying to focus on is just specifically related to the FEMA grants, right? Just because the uniqueness of it, that those involved, make sure that the, the procedure that has been outlined is acceptable to the commissioners. That's kind of what we were trying to flush out, flush out today.
All the four steps, identify the need.
I think we've done this, Doug.
Find the OEM for the FEMA grant.
I think we've identified that the EMPG and the SHSP, the commissioners are inclined to continue to have Juan be the, the direct, I guess liaison, for lack of a better term, specifically for those two grants.
I do have a question, Doug, thank you for bringing that up, because it's for Oki. Because Juan is not an employee, he is a third party. So what kind of, if he's writing these grants annually?
They're already written. The grants are already written, the state writes the grant.
So how do we need, so our MOU with Juan to be the emergency manager, needs to somehow call out that he will be accepting these grants on behalf, because?
No, it doesn't, you do. I get a supplemental grant agreement contract. I send the supplemental grant agreement contract to Oki. Oki reviews those pages, Oki, Oki tells me they're correct, then I ask to be on the boards that, and say, yep, your attorney has reviewed it, we're all good to go, all the state requirements are in there, there's no conflict with the county. And then you sign the grant, and take that, submit it back to finance, finance says it, and then they put under Valley County that money that was already allotted, and we can utilize it.
There isn't anything more to add? I mean, he's functioning as the emergency manager.
I don't see any funding, no funding goes through my office. And the SHSP doesn't even go through the clerk's office, because it goes straight from reimbursement. I put in for the reimbursement, it has all the signatures that the work has been done. And then they review it, and they send that money directly to the vendor, so it doesn't even go through the clerk's office. So we don't even see the funding for the SHSP. Through the reimbursement of the EMPG, though, I take the voucher form for the year, that they paid this much every month. I turn that in as our invoice, like I just did last week, this year. And then they review it, they give me a little thing that says it's reviewed and reimbursement is in order. And then I send that email to Doug saying it has been up for reimbursement, look out for the check. And then the check comes back. So I never see dollars.
Again, though, for the process, if your name wasn't on it for any reason, and another vendor is there, I, I guess what I'm saying, you get hit by a bus tonight, and we have to replace you. I want to make sure that that process is somehow documented, that that's the way you're doing it. So I don't know.
That's the process that you guys gave me to do, because before, I wasn't even going through your, I was just bringing the supplemental agreement, and then you guys asked me a couple years ago, don't do that anymore, has to go through him first. Like, I just sent him one last week, so.
Documentation is what we're trying to get to.
Right.
Procedure is what we're trying to get to right now. So that probably needs to be documented somehow, that that is the process. So just, so that it's in writing.
Well, one, one way you can address this is centralize all Valley County grants through your grant writer. So Ken, so Ken is at least involved. He doesn't have to be, he doesn't have to be, I mean, there's no reason that Juan can't continue to fill out the grant, bring it to you, go through that whole process. But if you have everything centralized in one, one position, then if you have a question about a grant, then Ken should be able to answer, answer the question. If he doesn't have the answer, then he knows where to go to find it. So, so I, I like that concept. It does slow things down a little bit, but it definitely formalizes the process, so you, you kind of have a system in place. But this is a good example of, of a, a, a grant that we routinely get, that the application is pretty standard, my review is quick, there, I mean, there, we're, we're not negotiating, we're, we're looking at a grant, and we're saying, do we want the grant? Do we qualify for the grant? If we do, then we fill the application form out, and we, you know, wait, wait for the answer. It's, it's once we receive the award that you really have to be paying attention to the details on, you know, what, what reports are required, what receings required, what annual report back to the grantor, just to make sure we're checking all of those boxes.
And what would happen with, if for some reason if I'm not here, is the area field officers, which we have two, would get in contact with the county and say, who is your new delegate for the emergency manager? And if you picked whoever that was, they would get with that person, give them automatic access to Idaho GMS, and they would walk them through the process of doing the quarterly, the paperwork, and that, just like I did when I took over for the last EM. They took me, went through, said, here's your grants, they're in line, here's how you use Idaho GMS. They actually came here and did the whole thing.
So your field officers are through IOEM?
They're through IOEM. So once they would realize that something happened to me, and the grant writer contacted and said, hey, Juan isn't here, this, whatever happened, they would say, who is delegated as emergency manager? And they would start the process over again, like when I took over. And then, so they take care of that. And then as far as the paperwork and all that, that's, they manage all of that. They are my, they are the central grant people for EMPG and SHMP, SHSP. They do all of, the state's the one that monitors everything for the grant.
Those are federal, federal funds.
They're state, they're federal funds given to the state, which the state gives to us.
We're a sub-recipient, which means the state really is on the hook, making sure that those funds are distributed and spent appropriately to the, so, so we're kind of the, the second layer.
And we have a lot of them in the Sheriff's Department.
Well, they're, they're different. So like with IDL, that, we have, the, ID, IOEM has its own grant people.
Yep.
So I am responsible as your EM to those grant people to make sure that all of the paperwork on that supplemental agreement you signed is being met. So the quarterly reports, the executions, how I request the funding, how I execute the funding, being reimbursed, all those things, go through them.
And there's.
I'm only seeing that Ken actually has a document that says, we get an EMPG grant and an SHSP grant annually. And, you know, because our expert is the one that's actually doing this work. You're aware that we're getting it, you know, the dollar amount that we're getting, but there really isn't any work from you in order to accomplish this task.
Not a ton. I believe there's.
There really isn't even a ton for me, because all it is, is doing the milestones, which the area field officer ensures I have the right wording in for the milestones, because they always require something different every year. And I just pretty much am dictating. And then I have to update those every quarter and say, yep, here's what we're doing, here's a little quick description of where we are with the grant, um, you know.
So I guess wanting to be helpful for Ken, I mean, if he's documenting that, just give him a field officer contact, if something does happen, he at least knows who to contact.
Or you can see.
He's already been, he already knows the contacts, and he's the, the, our new listed grant writer. I made sure that the grant people know, and our area field officer already have his information.
And, and the.
And that was specific for Brick Grant, but they're, they would more than likely just call him, and say, hey, Juan's had these grants out, we have, there's nobody, what's going on in the county?
And I know we're, we're kind of running short on, on time here, but I, I fully support what Juan is, is saying, and, and everything that he's doing. And I see that, uh, the, the role of the grant writer, the position is to go back to what you were talking about, you know, what's the big picture of, of the county? And this is, you know, one of the data points for, this is how much money we're getting, and this is what we're doing with it. And that could be a summary report along with all the other departments, and the department of education, and, and other.
And Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department as well.
Tasers, automatic kind of.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that way, you're, you've got a summation report that you can put before the, the public, and this is how we're, this is how we're doing our job. Um, and it's not taking everybody's time, and your time for multiple presentations, if you don't want them. If you do, there, there are times where it's appropriate.
And I have no problem, right, giving an email, once you guys do the supplemental agreement sign, I have no problem just seeing him on that, so he gets the, yep, the agreement's been signed for this year, and here's the funding that we're going to have in that.
Perfect. And that's what I kind of see with my grants as well, is I'm going to keep them in the loop and everything, but what I noticed when we had McKenzie, or the previous grant writer, it took me four meetings to accomplish one reimbursement, where it literally took me two hours. But it's definitely something that I would definitely like, maybe our process could be a little bit faster, potentially, right? I'm not, I'm open to that, but I did notice it took a lot more of my time, and I don't have a lot of time already, um, because it's all in the field, right? So that's one thing we could definitely talk about. But I do like how he's saying that it is more centralized, that it's not only my department that has access to all of this, it's going through the clerk's office, and it's accomplishing whatever the clerk's office wants in the end.
So Mara, the time that it took four meetings, was that because nobody knew who was going to do that function?
It's, there's a couple pro, things that happened, is process of how, who was going to do one, and then truly, um, the finance aspect is, um, what, there are some things that were missed of what I spent and stuff, but I'm keeping track of all of that. And it was just getting the iron out.
You just have all of the information that's needed anyway, so you gotta pull it out of you anyway and give it to somebody else and make sure they.
I did, exactly. But also, at the same time, I wouldn't mind having him, like, before I submitted reimbursement, him looking over everything and making sure that I have everything checked off, and I'm okay with that. But truly, him, with McKenzie, she did it all, and then I checked her. And that's what took more time, because she did all of it, and then I was like, well, you're missing this map, you're missing whatever, this, 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 this. So if it's opposite, I feel like that might be even more beneficial for my department, just because there's so many aspects. And it's still going through him.
It'd be better off saying, hey, we've finished these contracts, these guys need to be paid, here's the claims, whether that goes to Ken, or it goes to Doug, or whoever, and then you're out of, it may take two weeks until we approve claims here.
And now, that's all the same, that's not changed.
That's all good.
That's ne, that's, that process never changed. It's after the claim gets sent to Rita, she does all of her things, I just go and get the warrant and then attach it. So I don't wait until December to put it in a reimbursement. Where McKenzie had so much, I'm literally, I know that I just submitted something, I know it's going to take about two weeks for Rita, and then I just attach it. And so I have my own process already done, because I only have my grants, I'm not facilitating twenty's, eighty grants. So, like I said, even after that, I can still submit it to him, so he has the documents to review and make sure I've submitted everything that he finds, um, so we can kind of sit down and hash out our process.
And there's going to be time for it.
It's going to be different.
He's going to be slammed, it, maybe he can't, could you do it this time or this quarter?
Either way, I still think everything should be more centralized. I'm not saying that it's just going from me to you guys, I, I am going to include him.
Okay, we're.
The other question I have is with MOUs, MOUs still will always go through legal, correct? Yeah. So after we apply for a grant, and once we get awarded the grant with an MOU, that does need to go through legal.
Yeah.
So a question now, because we're out of time, are we nailed on the FEMA? Everybody good on that? Doug, way in here. We're all good, how that process works, because I want to move to the next agenda item, which is mobile risk.
I think we have a, a better understanding of the expectations from the commissioners, and I think.
Everybody good?
Process. If there's anything that we can do about, we'll bring it back to your attention.
I agree, and I think that, you know, Ken, I don't know if it's you, I don't know who it is, but we need something in, in writing. There needs to be a, a procedure that's developed, um, just for the next grant writer. That's been my big deal since I came on the county, that things are written down, so that somebody steps into a position, they understand, you know, the process, so we don't start all over again.
Okay, so then let's move to mobile risk, I'm assuming somebody probably don't need to be here for that.
See ya. Nice hearing from you, Cinda.
Stay.
Good seeing you, Jeremy.
Thank you for your contributions, Cinda.
You bet, anytime. We already have it worked out.
You got it worked out. All right. So I guess what I need is some help with this, with mobile risk assessment. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mara, but this is where we go out and we look at individual homes, and we risk the, or analyze how risky they are. Who's been doing that in the past, and who's been, how do we do it now?
Let's level set, who wants to take the lead of the conversation, but give us some background, and then, you know, how we're going to do it moving forward, and get some legal.
How about if I do background, and then you guys can do moving forward? And I'll contribute in any way that I can. So several years ago, when Archie Van Berry was our county clerk, he came to me and said, man, we gotta figure out how to spend these Title III funds, and we've got to do it appropriately. Because there were a lot of counties that were under fire, they weren't spending the money appropriately, they weren't following the letter of the law, and we wanted to be righteous. So I spent a tremendous amount of time researching. And I discovered that one of the very righteous ways that we could spend this money was to support our county wildfire protection plan, CWPP. Okay, well, that's great, it's a document. We've had it since 2004, what's the big difference? Well, what would be better to support a CWPP than what Juan came back from a chief's conference from that year, about doing mobile risk assessments? There was a vendor up there, they were sin, uh, selling little data collectors with a software program. So he and I put our heads together, and we had a meeting with Archie down at the fire department, and said, here, this is a righteous way to use these funds. Because if we collect risk data from all over the valley, we can feed it into a CWPP that actually means something. Because quite frankly, up until that point, that sucker was done whenever it needed to be done, based on those requirements, and thrown up on the shelf. So how did we create some?
Like most plans.
Like most plans, even all hazard and everything else, it's just the way it goes, right? Well, this was a way to create information and to build programs based on that actual ground-truthing information. It wasn't the first time in history that folks had tried to do that, but the federal government had had a little difficulty with that, because, you know, some people that don't want the federal government coming around, looking at their property and, and creating an assessment.
Decisions.
So, anyway, so we got it approved through our county commissioners, and we sat down and went to work. And that became a task that Ken Postman and I took on. Basically, the boots-on-the-ground way in which we were going to manage this. And so we did start with using those data collectors and the CAN software, which was not flexible, so it needed to be adapted. We needed to figure out how we could collect information that actually could tie into our assessor data, so that we pulled together both data sets, so that we could understand more about that structure, including assessed value. Because value on assets is a big part of what's used when you're determining risk area and value of risk and that sort of thing. So we sat down, and we figured out that if Donnelly Fire would be. So we sat down and we figured out that if Donnelly Fire would be the employer of on the ground assessors, we didn't have to sign them up as county employees. We could run them through that program. Juan did it as a pass through. He paid all of the employees that we had, the assessors, and then the county reimbursed him with the Title III funds. And so that was a big part of what we spent. It was actually a really cool time because in, in seven and eight, nobody had a job. All the contractors had been laid off. There was, so we had this pool of amazing people to interview and hire. So we really, we had a great level of assessor out there. I mean, I had a couple of PhDs that were out there doing stuff. So it was really awesome. We ran a whole program of advertising for applicants, interviewing them, determining their ability to be out on the ground, determining their ability to collect appropriate data, figuring out what way we were going to get real information back and that we're going to be speedy enough that we could afford to do it. So we did a lot of training. We built a manual of understanding how to use the hardware, how to understand the software, what was required. And that all went really well, several training sessions. But what we really needed to do was figure out how we were going to deploy these individuals out into the community in a way that the community was going to accept them. So what I will tell you is that we did not step on anybody's property without invitation. And of course, a lot of structures in this county, you don't need to be necessarily on their property to do a fairly decent assessment. And what we were looking for is, is how it related to wildfire risk. You know, so what's the structure composed of? What kind of vegetation is around the structure? What kind of response time would there be where it's located to any kind of suppression assistance? All of those things were collected and factored into their result. We found that right away, if we put our assessors in fire department clothing, they were far better received. And so we didn't put them out there as firefighters, but we put them out there as working with the fire departments. Because everybody likes a fireman, right? So instead of saying, hey, we're from the county or we're from the government or any of that, we sent them out there with either depending on the time of year, whether it was a sweatshirt or a T-shirt or a hat or something like that. And so they had a little credential and more often than not, if the homeowner was on, was onsite, they most often will invite them to come around and do the back of their house as well or the rest of their property or whatever. So we had a really, really good response. Again, we employed people that had the kind of personality that could manage that. So that was important. So we sent them out, we collected all of this data in excess of 13,000 data points for an inhabitable structure. And we brought all of that information back and we analyzed and looked at what we were going to find out about these places. We tied that in together with our geographic hazard assessment, which is, was created by the fire working group with all of our institutional knowledge and information from a number of different factors. So that we could now say, hey, look, where, where are we concerned? You know, what, what do we need to look for and where are areas that we can write grants for? Where are areas where we need to do more education? Where are areas that we can go out and work with communities to do fire plans, wildfire plans? So that was a basis for it. And then the creme de la creme was that for many years, Juan could call me at any time he had an incident and I could provide him with structured data. And we did that right up until this July. Juan had requested that I provide this data to the GIS person with all of your blessing so that, that could be built into another program. When he called me, I was sitting on a horse on the Canadian border, getting ready to go into a class. And I honestly did not do, I did not take my GIS computer up there with me because I thought he had taken charge of them. Anyway, but up until that day, we were always able, no matter where in the world I was, I was always able to get him information. So he had a lot of, lot of stuff that, to work with for his risk assessments on an event. It worked out really well. We also identified where every single structure was. So that had ancillary benefits, whether it was a medical response, which this money is not set up to be for. But it was, it was a benefit that we got out of knowing where those structures were. And if they wanted to build on information, they could. So that's the background on it. That is how it came to be, that is how we use that funding very righteously. And we were able to bring a product to the county that the county could utilize as, as much as possible.
So tell me how, so when you're talking about assessors, you're not talking about our assessor's office, but you knew that each one of those parcels are out there because of the assessor's office? Or just how?
We did, we, we did under.
So it's still coordinating with the county's assessor?
100%. And what we did is we made sure, again, the software was very canned, we, we couldn't adjust it. We're talking early times really in this whole process.
GIS back then.
We had GIS, but not just really, truly, we were just one step up from a piece of paper. And so we did give, we provided our wildfire risk assessors with information on parcel data so that they could sit there and put that parcel data in to a field, which happened to be first name, you know, that we adapted so, in that we could further adjust down the road and, and use that field to join up that information. So that.
So now Mara has taken this more data information and created a website. That's what we approved this spring.
All those dots that you're seeing, you paid for to have assessed.
Okay. So we already have the number of units, we already have the number of houses then in a website. We already have what the existing condition was when they were on the field. So now Juan, what is the next step of this?
So Stephanie and I's vision has always been to make the portal more accessible. So it could be utilized not only for a multi-complex incident, but could be utilized for a single, one unit incident as data on a particular home site. We haven't had that. We've only used it on the emergency response side in multi-complex incidents like fire or avalanche or flooding or those types of things or weather events.
One second, because Title III funds have to be wildfire, right?
So it's all, so we could, here's the thing, when we built this thing, we built it for the CWPP. But we realized after we built it, the multifaceted purposes are, we're still, there's still things, I'm still surprised, we could actually use the mobile risk assessment to get this data from. So the primary purpose, it purposes, yep, CWPP as per Title III funding. But the benefits of that is tenfold because we get to use it for all kinds of things. We've used it for subdivision ordinance stuff, comprehensive plan stuff. Grants. An overall picture of when the state's doing a 50,000 view of the county and trying to assess our wildfire risk, we say, here's actual wildfire risk because it's on the ground. So we get a better assessment value. So there's all kinds of things that it's for. So my thing is, is being that, that's why when we were talking about building a portal that's more accessible, it's always been for the use of, of, one of the facets was always so that our first responders could use it on a day-to-day basis and have ingress, egress, what type of home we're going to, those types of things. The more information we can get, our shorthanded three-person teams with more information about that structure, the better we could do situational awareness and the scene size up and get a better outcome. So it hasn't been that way because to get data, we have to go through one person. And this was the idea of let's make it, it's accessible. Then at the same time, with the BSU's all hazards portal, we could utilize portions of the mobile risk assessment to have that in specific data in almost all of the little points we picked, because we already have that data assessed. We can throw those in there. And then have a separate, what we're looking on now in that, in that portal we just built with BSU that have administrators, like the emergency manager would have specific things that they could really access the mobile risk assessment using the portal that's being built, plus in conjunction with the portal we just finished with BSU. So you could get a lot of data. Because data analytics is the key, key for everything when we're looking at what we're building for strategic planning for the future. We have to have the data available. So that was the purpose of having Kara get involved and build a portal. I have had conversation a couple of times now with Mara. We had a great conversation last week determining what's the next steps. And I'll tell you this. Since the inception of the mobile risk assessment, we have used it for every major fire we've had. Instead of taking what you hear in other counties, days to get assessment data of what's available out there for them to have to come up with a plan for their action plans every day, it takes us hours. And we have it up.
For the command?
For.
Incident command.
Now, July 24th, I call it because my number one person on my list, as soon as there fires, calls Stephanie. Because Stephanie's going to get me the data like that. She reminded me, hey, you got this other person over here who gets you the data, I'm not available. So I used Kara, Kara the entire time. Kara could pull it up, give me the data. I could take that data and shape files and by paper to the incident command post. They would give it to the operations. Operations would give it to their division supes, division supes would give it to their engines. So everybody had the data of all the homes throughout the entire thing. Anytime they give a new polygon and say, we need to know what's in here, they would do that. Then their structure analysis team would go out and take our data to add to their data because they do their own, even though we have it, they would go through and make sure that ours is correct, plus update ours as we go through. So that they could have a good thing. But one, it made it very expedient for those guys on the teams to do it because they already had the data. They weren't going into a polygon or residential area that blind, they knew what to see. So to digress a little, the state now wants to know where all those little dots are on the houses. Now, the feds, FEMA 10, I just got off the phone with FEMA 10 a couple of weeks ago, they really want to make the mobile risk assessment a necessity. And in order to get an FMAG, they want to know where all those dots are. So we have sort of changed the game.
Tell them to pay us.
And it's going to be, because I will tell you, getting an FMAG is extremely difficult. It isn't even from two years ago. It's extremely difficult. They're shortening the timelines. If you don't have 65 homes that are primary, don't even talk to us. It was so hard.
Because they have no more money.
Well, it's so hard for all of our fires and residential areas in just this year. Every time would be like, I'd get the, the data and I'd be like, there's only six primaries in Clear Creek in 50 homes.
Yeah.
I can't get, I can't get an FMAG for that. And it was just consistent through the whole year because they've really narrowed down getting it. So we did not get an FMAG. Why did we not get one? Because then again, when they give you the timeline, you have, you're subject to that time. And to keep one open now isn't like four corners. Everybody praises me, even FEMA 10, that I kept FMAG open from the start of the fire to the end of the fire. Plus extended it for two weeks so IDL could participate in the remainder. Well, FEMA's like, oh, wait a second, we can't have EMs learn how to do that anymore. So we got to change the rules now. So that's what's happened this year, it's just real big changes. We never really met the criteria at the time. So mobile risk assessment is more valuable than ever in that type of need. Now, not just for that, but avalanches, landslides, how does it affect? They want to know that data. Well, who's it affecting? How many primary homes is it affecting, how many secondary homes? How many actual structures do you got on the ground in this particular area? Mobile risk assessment's helping with that. We have that data. Now, after talking with Mara and the updates of the data, I've changed, I totally changed my tune. She's made me see the light.
Awesome.
On that. Realizing that Title III funding is where it is, okay? I've talked, Doug and I had a conversation, sorry, Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller and I had a conversation the other day about that $1,500 we have associated every year for update of mobile risk assessment or gathering and having her grab the data for us for an incident. She's already contracted, why can't we use that funding? I said, once we have the local emergency decoration open, we could do that. And you could just take that funding from wherever you want to within your budget that the commissioners approve. That's why we do a local emergency. So I think we got that figured out for any updates that we need as there is an emergency arising.
Juan, you know, the map that the guy showed us over there on the side of the lake and they had a zone, every zone, there's a mobile risk setup so that, and we need to know the mobile risk.
It is now.
In this zone, in this zone, in this zone.
It is now.
It is now.
That's the first thing that I asked Kara to do. I need to know how many homes per zone and I want every block per zone. And then I went to the assessor's office, made sure that it coincided with the information. We tuned that. Now, those are associated and all those little dots are correct and updated. So after talking, back to Mara and I's discussion, we have got a whole bunch, more than 20% of update in the county because we not only have the west side updated, we have the east side updated because we were fortunate to have fire on both sides, right? So we have a lot of structures that we have. I have the data sets from those structure engineers and assessors for the, that have updated our data. So I'll just give that to Mara, Mara updates and we do that. Now, that saves us for a while in our updating.
Kara.
Our Kara, sorry. Kara will, Kara will do that. It'll save us for our 20% for a while. So what does that do? That gives me as the fire working group chair, your emergency manager, and Mara as a wildland person to figure out a program to how do we do, how do we figure out to continue the assessment process other than when we have an incident? So it gives us some time. So do we need Title III funding of $45,000 this year? We do not. All we need is the remainder of the 12,000 that we need to update the portal because we are in agreeance that the portal is necessary for the county. So we need the $8,000 allocated this year out of Title III funding to, so that Kara can finish the job, get the portal where we want it.
Haven't we already paid her that one?
We paid her 4,000, we should just put a bill in for 4,000. So we have 8,000 more to pay. Once we pay that, then that's done. That's all we need, a Title III funding. Then it'll be up to us to figure out how we're going to do assessments within a year, 18 months, 24 months, where we should be doing some more assessments, other than an emergency response assessment, so that we can go through it. So that gives us the opportunity to come up with a program, just like when Steffi and I came up with the program. Now, we're doing it again in Mara's, in that place. So now we will come up with the program with the fire working group to help us to determine how we're going to continue our surveying down the road. So we won't.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We shouldn't need any more funding other than the $12,000. After talking to the fire chiefs.
And the licenses.
And no, we won't need the license. We need the licenses for the surveying once we get that done. But once we, once we start doing survey, we'll have to pay for licenses as well as the update to the portal. We can talk about that as we build the program. I talked to the fire chiefs, the fire chiefs were like, I'll be honest with you. They were supporting me in the fact that I wanted to go back out and do assessments. But after discussion, after this summer, they're like, and because we are so shorthanded, I have chief coming to me from Cascade saying, I have an army of one, I can't do 20% of my county. My fire marshals all, I have a city being built called Tamarack, plus everything else in our district. How, how am I supposed to do these assessments? McCall's busy with all of their stuff going on. They're like, their guys, Garber's like, I don't think I can do the assessment. So through all of the discussion, because of our fortunate ability to get all these assessment values done in the southern end of this county, we're well ahead of the 20% once we get those updated and implemented into the new portal. That, that gives Mara and us plenty of time to figure. that, that gives Mara and us plenty of time to figure out a plan like in the past to continue the assessment processes so that we can continue to utilize mobile risk assessment for the plethora of things that it allows us to do in our county. It is a very vital thing. And I will tell you right now, I, mine was very, my idea of what the portal was, was tiny compared to what it actually ended up being and what we utilized it for. The granting uses it all the time. Just that alone is like the big thing. Not just having the boots on the ground on a fire having the information, but what we've been able to accomplish in all levels of the county government, not just for fire, is amazing. And I can't say enough that I didn't think we were building that. And when we got done, we were like, holy smokes, there's so much information here.
I think the BSU stuff integrated with that too. I mean, it's going to be.
And it's only going to get better with the BST stuff. Once we get the resiliency portion put in, we're going to have three things that are going to be top notch. I don't think anybody else in the western states has this. I will tell you right now, when we talk about mobile risk assessment, because I have been all over the country talking about it, they don't have what we have in the mobile risk assessment. No one, even Boise tried to mimic. Ada County tried to get them paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to do a mobile risk assessment. It ain't even close to the information that we have. So Boise Fire doesn't even have the information that we have about their own residents. So it is a huge thing. We can't let it die. But I think, you know, after some good discussion with Mara, her put me in my, in the right direction in understanding the data that we're receiving, using her experience, this is why she's here. She's a forester. She says, hey, we could do this different than the 20%. It's going to, we can do it more cost effective and I agree with that. And I think that's all, all, all I need is to fulfill our obligation for the original contract at $8,000 this year and some time to work with the fire working group and Mara to work through the mobile risk assessment moving forward.
That's really good news. I think that, I was kind of hoping it would come out that way. Mara, are you using the building department, like new building permits? Does that information get tied into all this every year?
That's something Cara pulls from the assessor. So she is pulling all that kind of stuff. And those are the things that go in in the future. Those are the first things we need to assess is the new building permits, the new structures that were built from the last assessment. Cause the last assessment was done in 2018. So there is quite a bit, obviously we know since then that will need to be assessed. Like he said, he did get 20%, but that is something I do think we need to conduct first is that new stuff and then figure out assessments after that. One thing with the mobile risk assessments and Stephanie can attest to this too. And she's actually the one who brought it up is a lot of structures don't change, right? The house itself, the foundation's always stayed in the same spot. It's whether they have done work on their property or they've done some fire mitigation. And truly in the future, once we get caught up, I think setting out an assessment to landowners and saying, this is what your property is assessed at. If you don't agree, contact us and we'll come back out and do an assessment. That's the kind of stuff that I think the money could be truly used for instead of arbitrarily just doing 20%, right? Maybe it might be 20% this year, maybe it's 50%. But those are some of the things that I think we can discuss of how to truly use that funding to keep this alive. And like he's saying, I, I do think this is a really good program to keep alive and to have multiple accesses where it's not just one individual. I don't want it to make it so where the emergency manager has to come to me for everything. But I do think we need to be very cognizant of who has access to it. Cause there's going to be a lot of, and Stephanie can attest to this, a lot of sensitive information that could be used inappropriately.
So you're talking about the Title III funds and you can't find anybody to help. You use those Title III funds to hire people to do the assessments?
So the plan is, is not to use Title III funds in the future. Plan is to use the $8,000 this year and then us come up with another mechanism to do these surveys from now on because the Title III funding is shorty. There's other, we have other processes that the Title III funding needs to go to rather than that. We, we, but now we have time. The fire has given us time with the assessments that we've gotten now to try and come up with a plan within the next 24 months of how we're going to continue the survey process.
I'd really like you to talk to the assessor's office, talk to Sue. They have, they have boots on the ground at every single home. You know, why not a checkbox of, you know, some type of fire mitigation? Has fire mitigation, you know, been observed?
Requires training.
Yeah, you'd have to train them all.
The individual can understand what they're looking for because they're, it's a pretty complicated system. There are multiple options. So you do have to have a fairly decent trained eye to understand what does that mean? What does slope mean? What does vegetation, is it, you know, heavy timbered or is it light? You know, those sort of things. It's all possible. We trained people off the street to do it and we received excellent data back. So it's very possible.
Use what's already in place, you know, if there's a way to do that.
You know, one of the things that, you know, we've been rolling around here and talking about, and it's been really super important to me because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against 20%. What I'm against is random. And so, you know, when we have worked somewhere, when we have done fuels treatments, there should be a change in what that resulting risk assessment is going to be. We have homeowners that call all the time. Can you come and talk to me about what my risk is? So there's an update opportunity. You know, we have concerns from other fire professionals. Hey, I got a, I got a problem with this. This has really changed and, you know, so we go that direction wherever it is in the county. And then we start looking, people are now calling about their insurance reviews. They're having issues. They're asking for letters, you know, they want to know, hey, I've done this. Can you come and give me an assessment or reassessment? You know, we have, we do already have structures that are considered extreme in their assessment. And, you know, like Mara was saying, maybe we need to contact them again and say, hey, you're, you're extreme. Do you agree with that? You know, and maybe go back and look at that if they think there's been changes. Additionally, fire wise grant applications, if there's an area that Mara has identified that she wants to go after, maybe that's a good time to also look at the assessment. She gets an eyeball on things and like, hey, I need to get another assessor out here to re-look at some things because it's worse and I want that to support my grant application. So you obviously new construction and then you've got assessments for structures that are in high risk geographic areas that we've identified. And what are those structures doing? A lot of those, what are those structures doing? So I mean, there's a way to kind of look at what's calling us right now, you know? And so you can say, well, what is that going to take? How many assessments can we do? You know, you only do them so many months of the year. You know, can we manage that? Can we work with the assessor department? How can we get that solution done? But how can we do it in a little more of a targeted way? And then if we have more time, then okay, let's go get this corner. Let's send a team out to the back country because we assessed every single structure in the back county, several in Idaho county, several in Adams county and several in Boise county. So if they were in some way in a response related area, we went and looked at that because the fire crosses boundaries all the time, as Juan tells you. So, you know, there's, there are a lot of things to consider. And that's why I'm super stoked about this because I really honestly, it's great if there's other funding, sounds like there's going to be. But to me, if you have to go back to Title III, it should be with wildfire mitigation leading the charge. Because all the ancillary things that you get, big time cool. But the reality is, is that, you know, trying to figure out how to keep it going and now having some sort of digital access, which I gotta tell you, COVID just killed us on this program. You know, we no longer could send people out to communities and talk to people. But I'm so stoked that this is in fact what we thought. And that's, it's leading the way. We had a good idea and it's leading the way on solving a lot of issues. And now there's a process in place that it doesn't just.
Well, thank you guys for all your out of the, you know, box thinking because it's obviously paying off in droves and will help keep our communities safe. As you guys think through the process, you know, as we move forward. So I did, I talked to Juan about it just for a minute. And then basically we're a lot more in tune to our legal requirements than we used to be. And giving money to a vendor is a concern that I would have that, you know, we would have to have some really strong MOUs in place right now just to give you a check and have you go hire people through the Donley Fire Department. I don't know how that structure would even work in our world today. And so, you know, thank you for all you've done. Let's make sure as we build it in the future, that it's a sustainable tool. We can continue to support in, you know, our forever. And the other, the other thing I think that we need to use it for, and I'm just going to throw this out there for thinking, but there we doing the comp plan right now. And our existing comp plan says that we're going to put houses out on the perimeter of the valley. And I have great concern with putting more housing in the Wui. We need to figure out where, you know, what that looks like for our county and use the tools that we have so that we aren't, we're not pushing development toward an area that's going to create, you know, problems for fire in the future. I want to protect that ground, but I also don't want to put houses right in the middle of where they're going to burn. And so how do we use this data that we have on where our highest priority fire areas are? And let's, let's help empower a comp plan that actually makes sense for the county as we move forward.
Couple of questions I had, and I think we got, one of them anyway, consider first of all is, is there an option to do these assessments from the air, whether it be drone or satellite? I think you should keep that option available.
I, I have to, I have to step in here real quick with the voice of reason. One of the reasons we were successful is we did not invade space. We were very judicious about how we interacted with each landowner. And I can't even fathom, I just know who lives here. And have somebody have a drone in there going like this and then go around like that.
Shoo it out of them.
There may be a little reaction that, I mean, I would just be, I would just be, because we have, we have such a diverse residency here. Not only a high number of second homeowners that we don't get to communicate as efficiently with, right? I mean, if it was as simple as putting a note on their assessment bill and they knew everything, we'd be golden, right? But short of that, we, because nobody reads that really. But the reality is, is that man, I have to say, and I think Juan will attest to this. The feedback that our on the ground assessors got was thumbs up. Wow, thank you guys for being here to care about what's going on. And honestly, we didn't care who got credit for it. You know, it wasn't important for anybody to say, hey, I did that. Or hey, this organization's in charge of it. Nobody cared about that. All they cared about is that the community was welcoming. I mean, even to the point cookies and milk. I mean, just really some really cool reactions or hey, let me walk you down the street. I'll introduce you to my neighbors. That was effective. And so I would really caution, as cool as that could be, everything that we do, every interaction is education. Everyone, every time we talk about anything that has to do with fire risk is a win because it cannot be talked about enough. And so having individuals, quality individuals out on the ground and making those interactions and helping people understand how important that work is. Boy, what we got from that was unintended.
Well, I think the PR factor is probably better with, with having boots on the ground. Um, the second question I had is you were talking earlier about who can look at this data? And I'm not sure if we have appraisers that go out and collect this data. That's a different realm than an individual.
So the way we've always done it is, is the facilitator of the data can give specific data only. So when we do the portal, that has already been discussed. That's, there, there's portions of the portal that only certain individuals get to look at. The majority of the portal, everybody gets to look at, but there's certain things specific to tied to assessor data that only certain individuals will have permissions to do that.
We probably should do a huge education because that, the BSU portal already tells you what your fire risk rating is. We should encourage everyone to go and look at whatever your fire risk rating is.
And that's a, that's a grand view, right? So these ones, I mean, that is a assessment that, I mean, even the forest service use. But truly sometimes when you go down on the ground, it might be like medium up here, but it's actually really high and extreme. And so they, they're, they're similar, but they're off.
From the sky.
Yeah. So that's the biggest thing that this assessment is truly more localized. And that's why I'm, I've really encouraged to make it, like you said, sustainable and something that we can use in the future. I mean, not just for wildfire mitigation, granted that's the main component, right? But we are using it for a lot.
Funding mechanism, but we get the ancillary benefit from it.
And that's the biggest thing for me is I just truly want to make it sustainable and make it easy for who needs it to use it and make sure that it's only used by certain individuals.
Well, I think we're going to probably down the road, see a day when people are going to say, I don't agree with my insurance company raising my fire because I'm a low risk. I have the assessment, here's the data.
Well, the problem is, is when you look at the wild, when you look at the national wildfire risk map and you put Valley County, there is a 98 probability, 98% probability that you will have a wildland urban interface fire in Valley County.
You can't beat that.
I looked, I looked at Donley, just specific Donley Fire District, and we're at 90 percentile. And the majority of ours is pasture, but we're still 90 percentile. So that's what, and that's open to anybody. So that's what the insurance companies are seeing.
Yes.
Is that data. And when you talk about comp plans and all that, you have realized 98%. And that was one of the things after coming back from the cohesive strategy was mitigation effort is number one, including prescribed burning, sorry. We have to burn and we have to mitigate and thin. And there's no way around it. It's not going to change until we do. So that's, that, that really changed my whole outlook on assessment data was, that's one key component, but it's not the ultimate key component in the overall picture of what we're doing here. Mitigation efforts, which is her office, has got to be front and foremost for that Title III funding.
We can also have conversations with the forest service. I mean, it can't all be that they're just going to come and fire off the forest every summer.
Well.
They have to work with the county in our mitigation efforts and.
They do in the fire working group. The problem is, is we're not burning enough. Sorry, we're not.
We weren't at one point. So that's the problem is.
I think we've burned a lot this summer.
We did, but we, we went from a, a society where we over logged and then we went to the point where we didn't.
I don't know that I'm going to describe that, that comment stand, but I just, I just know that if you don't, well, because I come, that's my background. And I don't think that, that that was necessarily the case. I just know that if everybody doesn't stay on board, like your group now, because it is your group to run, that you stay on board with what's going on, but the forest service is not forced to come and talk, quite frankly. So it's important that you create a conduit for them to come and speak so that you can all be on the same page. But the reality is, is all this money that we spend on private property, all of it should be paid for by the private property owner. I'll just say that right out loud after having spent millions of dollars here in my tenure.
It's really the private property owner's responsibility.
And so that's what I've been working toward, quite frankly, instead of giving money to millionaires.
But if you go in and do a treatment on your house or your property, you would think, okay, I'm going to get an insurance break. You don't.
Well, because your four neighbors around you may not have done a good thing. You know, and you can't control their property either. So you have these situations where if you don't, you know what? Prescribed burn has to happen. We all know that. Everybody knows that it's important. And I'm sorry, that just, it's a hot point for me about the over logging thing. But I just, I just understand that folks come to new ways slowly. And just our experience with the bloody biomass up at the transfer site. Oh my gosh, we can't have four days of smoke bothering me. And it's like, how do you like your smoke? Because you can get it a really cool way for four months if you don't do something about it. And so folks are saying, I don't want to be bothered for four days with a perfect plan, with the right authorities involved, all of the science and whatnot and not accepted. When do they start seeing processes coming into play where they don't want to masticate hazard fuels anymore? They want to pile and burn them. I mean.
Well, and I guess.
We'll have smoke all summer.
My comment, Juan, is that the forest service put aside eight and a half million dollars for the sale. Okay, we were supposed to start this mastication. We were supposed to. We were supposed to start this mastication, we were supposed to, you know, do these burns and everything else. We just burned up most of it, and it probably cost 300 million. We have got to start front loading, whatever it is they're gonna do, fire's great, I don't care about fire. But they need to do it yesterday, instead of waiting until we burn it. And then we spend all of this money fighting it, instead of putting it on the ground and taking care of it upfront. The Four Corners fire, the NEEP had been done for 10 years, from what my conversations were with everyone. It's like, how do we empower that conversation upfront? Let's get this done, we're gonna burn up people pretty soon, and they're doing that in other states. People are losing lives, they're not taking care of our forest upfront. We're putting all this money to take care of it on, on the backside, which, in my opinion, is absolutely fluke. How much work could we have done for the amount of money that it just cost us, fight this fire this summer?
I was at a conference eight years ago, and at the time, Brad Little was a Lieutenant Governor, and he was the keynote speaker. And he got up there, and he just lambasted everybody in that room for the cost. He said, I just got a bill. He goes, what could we have done with that money if we had been proactive, right? And he, I mean, everybody was just crawling under the table when he was finished, it was tough. What has happened in that period of time? Nothing.
I'd also like to encourage, what are we doing on private ground, though? So this is not, it's, it's a, it's a big picture view too, right? It's not just one side or the other, it's what are we doing as county officials to make it so that we can regulate wildfire mitigation on private ground? Because there truly is no cross boundary, right? So what are we doing to make it so, when we do have a new subdivision going in urban phase, to make it so that it starts? Before houses are built.
We have a Wui plan that is actually enacted and held accountable to it.
We have a subdivision.
We have a subdivision.
That is not being instituted in the way in that it's written, which is prior mitigation to building. And that is not being enforced right now.
And that's, that's a whole nother conversation.
Well, and I think a lot of that stuff comes down to the fact that developers feel like, if I build a road and subdivide this, my road is my fire mitigation.
But they're being told in their subdivision plan that it is not, and that there are other ways that they need to do that mitigation. When you have a well-written plan submitted that says, this is what needs to be done in advance, and this is what the continuing maintenance needs to be, then the developer is told through our ordinance that they either have to complete that mitigation prior to getting their final plat, or they have to bond to that work. And there's so much else involved with a CUP, right? That all the other things kinda, and this, who's enforcing that plan?
Well, I like the idea that that puts the onus back on the private landowner to fix their own problem. Whether it's the developer or eventually the homeowner.
Are you suggesting a condition of approval for an application? That, that an evaluation be done and mitigation be completed before final plat?
That's what the ordinance says.
But the other issue is that 10 years from now, who's gonna maintain it?
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, that's another.
We're not getting any maintenance on these down the road.
Right.
Well, but we have a, a individual within the county now that is making sure that CUP requirements are met. And you go back out in 10 years, you know, you fly it for 10 years, and you go back out and make sure it's being implemented.
And these comments can be submitted for every application we solicit. We solicit EMS, schools, road solicitation for CUPs. We should be soliciting wildfire mitigation analyses for parcels that are being proposed to be developed. I think it'd be really valuable information for planning zone information to say this is a, this is a high risk or a low risk or a moderate risk for land-urban interface.
On the other, the other side of that, we encourage development in the Wui. We don't encourage development out in the Valley Ford, even though we've got it everywhere. Where there isn't as a big a fire risk or fire hazard. So we're really countering, a lot of our offices aren't really working together to reach that.
I think it's also just the culture of where people wanna live too, is part of it, right? Like, a lot of people come to the mountains to live in the mountains, in trees.
A lot of trees and a little prick in the backyard, yeah.
I think, I think, I mean, it's all just bigger discussions, right? How we can impact and change the culture, not just on like federal ground and public ground, but also private ground, right? That's the biggest is, how can we change here in Valley County?
And we have, we just need to keep it up, which is why it's brilliant to continue that process, because so much has changed from me begging people to take money. And that's what it was, it was begging people to take money to make a change, to do something on their property. And now that is not, it's the other way around.
Well, it used to be, 20, 30 years ago, that everybody burned their own stuff on their property. And that was a problem, because they always burned it the wrong time of year. And so we started the wooded debris collection, and we said, bring it here, we'll burn it later when it's safer. And it worked, I think we, we reduced our fire hazards down.
Significantly, it's a big deal.
But the issue now is it's costing us $200,000, $300,000 to take care of that wooded debris.
If you burned it.
Donley burned it for three.
I'll charge you $0.
Another further discussion. Yeah, I was gonna say, another discussion.
Free smoke scene.
Well, I was gonna say, what's the difference between August and, and January?
Or whenever we decide, I mean, it doesn't have to be a specific, whenever the month tells us we can burn it, we will burn it. I'd rather use that money somewhere else.
There's planning tools to make it so it's more effective, right?
She's an expert on.
That's the biggest thing, is using those tools, working with DEQ, all the things to make sure that that smoke's being lifted. Yes, there's gonna be an impact, there always is, we live in, in the trees, so you're gonna have some sort of smoke, whether it's chimneys or not.
We just ground it, so it's not a pot, or it's not a discussion this year. Next year, let's have that discussion again.
Um, one question I do have, and I don't know if we can answer this, but when we are having these larger fires, and we are requesting a lot of maps and stuff like that, or if we are having like a flooding situation with all these maps, what can help fund that kind of process if Juan needs it? Is that going to, like, I do think that we're gonna see a big trend this next couple of years of floods. Typically, it's always two years after a big wildfire that you get a lot of flooding disasters. You can see it on every map, we're worried about that.
Every graph.
So Title III obviously funds wildfire. How can we help fund when he needs access to get mapping for those all hazard mitigations? Where can he pull that kinda stuff from?
I think we just need to give Juan a line item, a contingency fund, and I actually think we have one, don't we? Like $10,000 in the contingency.
Well, and if it affects a county road, like the East Fork Road happened five years ago, and that's FEMA funding.
I was gonna say, because if he just needs some short-term.
Yeah, you're not talking about money out.
Just take it out of your contingency.
I'll just go, I'll go, we'll talk about it, like we did this year with getting the data, we talked about it, and then it was, so we figured out we paid for it. And it was, you know, $180 here, $200 there for the data.
You guys.
Should change once we get the portal.
So I owe Mara a beer, so I'll have to figure out how to fit that in. I owe you a beer for snapping, but.
Well, thank you guys. For the beer, let us know.
Thank you so much. Really, really happy to hear that you guys are all working together, and we're gonna come up with a sustainable program. And then also, I, I think we do need to continue the conversation about our ordinance, how we enforce some of this stuff with, especially if we're gonna put housing in the Wui. There's, you know, that's just, to me, the Forest Service is saying, absolutely don't do that, so we've just got.
Yeah, I'm saying the same thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, it's much time, we're gonna take a break, we'll see you when we're back.